Good morning, everyone. Welcome to tonight, or today's session of the Saginaw City Council Committee of the Whole. Some initial things, committees of the whole are not for the purpose of making decisions. They're only informational, and that's all today will be. No decisions whatsoever will be made by council today as far as any issue of recreational marijuana. I do want to mention, before we start, that we have restrooms off to the side here. There's refreshments to the back. The presiding officer here shall name a chairman to preside, and with council consent, I would offer to be the chairman of this committee meeting today. Counsel?
Counsel.
All right. Yeah, is law just by acclamation, I suppose, is sufficient, so thank you. All right. There are several things we want to cover. First, and because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience, please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. I would also like to remind everyone, this is probably the best time to do it, to turn off any electronic devices you may have, so we don't have disruptions as a result of those going off. There will be public input, once the manager's update has been given, it'll be a little bit later, the public input will be, but we want to welcome all of those who have signed up to address the council today. We want to thank you for sharing with us your thoughts and your input. Hearing from our citizens that we represent here on council is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly, so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, again, this will be a little bit later, please introduce yourself, state your name and home address, let us know if you are speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group or organization. All speakers will have a three-minute time limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to anybody watching here today, and to the council, so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. Now, this will have, the way we will proceed is initially, we will start with a moderator, and I will introduce the moderator in a moment. We will then have presentations from the manager regarding the three different topics. Once that is concluded, we estimate that around 12 to 12:30, we will then proceed to the public comment for those who have signed up. First of all, we would ask the clerk to take roll call. Where's my clerk? There we are.
Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer is pre-excused. Councilmember Mellon.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Mayor Clark. We have seven members, present, two absent.
Thank you. At this point, city council had previously approved to suspend the rules of order for the session, and that was done at the April 15 regular meeting, which allows us to proceed in the format that we are proceeding today. At this time, I'd like to introduce our moderator, and her name is Jennifer Rigtrink. Am I pronouncing that correct? Oh, close enough, I hope it's close enough. All right. She is the Legislative Associate of the Michigan Municipal League, and will be moderating this session today.
As the mayor said, I'm Jennifer Rigtrink with the Michigan Municipal League. Thank you for having me here today. I think this is a great step in what communities across our state are doing right now, having the public conversation about what is the best for your community, because all of our communities across the state are different, and the way they proceed and what they do is different. And so today, you are here to hear a lot of information, and also, I invite you that if you have not signed up for public comment, write your comments up and email them in. If you, you know, if you have, this is the beginning of a conversation, this is not, you know, the end-all-be-all just today. So with that, I would like to kick off our presentations, and first up, you're going to be hearing from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, Great Lakes, and Energy presentation. Thank you.
My name is Brian Rudolph. I'm the district supervisor in the Bay City District Office for what is now the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, otherwise known as DEAGLE, formerly the DEQ. We were asked to come here today, and joining me is Ms. Joy Brooks. Joy Brooks is our floodplain engineer within the Bay City District Office, so she will work with many people within the city in Saginaw County on floodplain issues, and along with Ms. Kaitlin Lefort, who joins us from the Warren Office in Air Quality Division. I'm going to take a few minutes, walk through sort of the regulatory framework that is most applicable for these type of operations, and then I'm going to turn it over to Joy and Kaitlin, because floodplain issues and the air quality issues are probably two of the bigger regulatory concerns when we talk about medical and recreational marijuana facilities. Under state of Michigan law, and we have to look at one particular overriding statute, it's Public Act 451, that's broken into a number of different parts, so you'll hear us refer to things like Part 301 inland lakes and streams, Part 303 wetlands, Part 31 floodplains, and any number of air quality parts that I'm not even going to guess at. So there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to environmental law, and the biggest message that I give everybody, whether you're a citizen or municipality, is to be proactive with your planning. You've got to be well ahead of the ballgame when it comes to knowing your responsibilities under environmental law, both state and federal. You've got to have good project planning, so you have an understanding of timeframes, an understanding of requirements, what can and can't be done. It starts with a simple phone call. You can call our office, you can call any office in the state that you're involved in, but being proactive and making that phone call is the first step. I would encourage you, I'll walk through a few things rather briefly, but I'd encourage you to take some time to get some more information. You can go to our website, and that's michigan.gov/egle. There is information there, and I believe it'll eventually get linked to the city's website, and it's this document right here, it's a short document, but it's a good overview, and it's titled Protecting Water Resources When Growing and Processing Marijuana. So I would encourage you to take a look at this. When we talk about water resources and state law, we really sort of split it into two parts. One part is municipally oriented, that's water quality, surface water, and with that, we're talking about wastewater discharges. What do you do with the wastewater from your project and your producers, your processing, and all of that? And the other half of that is more land resource-based, is part of the development. What are the requirements where you can and can't develop throughout your county and your city? Common questions that come up are things like, where can I discharge wastewater? I've got a facility, I need to get rid of excess water. Where do I put it? Could it go into my septic field? No, it cannot. Can I put it down a storm drain? No, you cannot. Can I pump it out to a pond? No, you cannot. Now, you look at this, you'll see there's a lot of no's. The reason for that is because most of the processes are industrial in nature, and they go to a municipal system. So if you're looking at these sort of operations, the key thing, again, being proactive, is talking to your municipal provider and find out what their requirements are going to be to accept wastewater from these type of projects. You can't just discharge anywhere, right? It can't go onto the ground next door to someone's house, it can't just get dumped into the Saginaw River. There are requirements for that, and they generally are going to go through your municipal treatment system. You also need to be concerned when you're doing development, is what county permits you need that come under state law, and that's primarily soil erosion and sedimentation control. You do need permits for that as well, to prevent excessive sediments and disruption going into the waterways and the river and wetlands of the state. The first step for those is to go through the county under what's called your Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Person, or Program. You have a person dedicated for that. That's also known as a Part 91 permit. If you're looking at a large project, one acre or more, you'll also need to come and get a permit from the state, but the processes are rather parallel, so just be ahead of the ballgame on that, and know that you need to start there. If, let's say you have a site where you need to develop some wetland areas, you should contact our office, make a, get a regulatory determination. There's a couple of different ways we can provide that. That's provided through what's called a pre-application meeting, where we can come out and look at a site, make a determination on regulatory requirements, or you can do what's called a wetland inventory review, and that goes through Lansing, but they'll essentially come out and look at your entire site and give you a document and a map that will identify regulated features on that property. Again, this is a proactive step, this is pre-project planning, so you have an understanding what the limitations are on the property you might look at for development. Both of those are fee-based, and the fee varies based on the size. So what do you actually need a permit for, or does a developer need a permit for, from the Water Resources Division when you look at a property? Now, what we've seen so far is kind of two very different types of development. Some have been in very rural areas, they're undeveloped, and quite frankly, they're all, they've all been in areas that had a lot of limitations, there's a lot of wetland, a lot of floodplain, and that caused all kinds of problems. But the reason it did is because all of this forethought and project planning didn't happen. And the other types that we've seen are being done largely in maybe brownfields, but formerly industrial areas, commercial areas, that likely don't have as much or have any wetlands on them, although sometimes they do. And I think that's probably what you'll see more of in Saginaw County in general. For those areas, typically, we're not looking at a lot of wetland impact. There may be some, but we will see a lot of floodplain impact potentially because of the Saginaw River, and so much of Saginaw County as a whole is within the floodplain, and Joy will talk more about that in a moment. So anytime you are going to dredge, you're going to fill, you're going to maintain a use, which is essentially construct something, or drain surface water from a wetland area, you'll need permits from our department, assuming that it's regulated, and that's a determination we'll make. That same general rule of thumb applies for streams, inland lakes and streams, it applies for some ponds now because of the recent changes in statute. If it's a pond within the floodplain, it may be regulated where previously it was not. So there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to the environmental water resource law, and that's why you keep hearing me say, be proactive, know what it is you're going to try and attempt to accomplish, and make some phone calls ahead of time. It will save everybody a lot of grief down the road. With that, I think I could just turn it over to Joy and let her talk about floodplains.
Good morning. Again, I'm Joy Brooks, and I am your district floodplain engineer, and I cover all 12 of our district counties for floodplains, but I have to admit that Saginaw has the biggest, baddest floodplains in the entire district, so I spend a lot of time down here. We've seen, as Brian said, sort of some people who put their cart before their horse when it came to how to develop these new industries with the medical marijuana specifically, and I'm sure recreational marijuana will come. And it seems that there are sort of three different types of developments that happen. You have the area where you grow the marijuana, where you process the marijuana, and where you sell the marijuana. And when we get into floodplain areas, for any one of these three types of developments, that's when you're going to get into some regulated activities. Floodplain and wetland areas, quite honestly, tend to sell for less money than other areas because they're harder to develop, so a lot of the places that we've seen have gone straight for these sort of cheaper properties, which in turns out are harder to develop. In Saginaw, in the city of Saginaw specifically, you've got some riverfront areas, and some brownfield areas, and some industrial areas that are definitely within the map floodplain, which might be a key area that people are looking to develop this new industry. For new development in the floodplain, if nothing's there and you're looking to develop it, people do need to get permits for filling and grading and construction, and there are specific requirements that they have to meet, usually elevation or floodproofing requirements, and that applies to all three different types of developments. The growing, especially if it's an indoor operation, the processing, and the selling. Now, the best way to identify the floodplains currently, I think, in Saginaw County, is the Saginaw County GIS map, which you can access online, and on that map, you can just go ahead and turn on the floodplain layer, and it's going to show you those boundaries. I'll tell you a secret, they also have wetlands on that map, so you can turn on the wetlands and peek at those too, all in one place, which is very nice. Once you get into those areas, then you know you're looking at state and local floodplain permitting, and you're going to be looking at filling and elevation. That could be six inches, that can be four feet, depending on the topography of the site that they're looking to develop. So it can mean a lot of delays and a lot of different project planning that people think when they're looking to buy and develop a property. John Stempel, hi John. He's the building official here in Saginaw, and he also deals with floodplain development, so I'm going to bring him up more than once in this presentation, but he can help too with determining if sites are in the floodplain, and with the floodplain requirements that are nestled within the Michigan Building Code. So straight-up development is pretty cut and dry. You know you need a permit, you know you've got to build in a certain way, but especially in some of our other areas, we've seen people redeveloping sites, or reusing, or wanting to reuse existing structures. This is where it gets tricky, and this is where John plays a key role, because if those existing structures are in the floodplain, you may or may not need the state permit to redevelop those areas if you're in the same footprint of the existing structure. So if we wanted to redevelop this building into a medical marijuana or recreational medical marijuana facility, and it were in the floodplain, then we have to look at something that we call substantial improvement. And substantial improvement is sort of a tricky floodplain situation that I think may come up in Saginaw, because you have these existing structures that people may want to reuse. What substantial improvement means is that if the work that you're going to do on a structure in the floodplain exceeds 50% of the current value of the structure, then that structure has to be brought up to the current floodplain codes. For example, if the flood elevation for this structure was all the way up to this platform, and we wanted to redevelop it, we would have to bring our lowest floor to a foot above this platform, and that can really put a problem in how people think that they're originally going to redevelop a building. And the person who actually is designated to make the call on this, whether or not something's a substantial improvement, is John. It's called out in the building code, I'm sorry, John. But knowing this and going forward, it can help you a lot. For example, if you had an area down by, in the floodplain, that you thought was going to be the major area that you were going to let medical or recreational marijuana development happen, then it's something that you want to give some forethought to and a lot of planning to, because those operations may just have a lot of regulation and a lot more requirements than you thought about going forward. So, in summary, floodplains are identified as, they're mapped by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. You can get it from FEMA's website, but your GIS website is the best place to locate your floodplain boundaries. When the development is in the floodplain, if it's new development, they're going to need state and local floodplain permits. If it's a redevelopment, they're definitely going to have to look at whether or not it's going to be a substantial improvement. They may also need new permits from the state, depending on how extensive their work is going to be, but it's going to take some requirements, it may take some engineering elevation, and a lot more work than people originally think it's going to take. And this would go for any type of new development, not just a marijuana facility, so if it was a church, or if it were going to be a new car plant, all these same floodplain regulations apply, but we wanted to point it out especially because we've seen it in other areas where people haven't been aware of these floodplain regulations and have had to backtrack a little And I'm going to turn it over to Kaitlin for air quality, which I am kind of excited to learn about myself.
Well, good morning, everyone. So I'll be switching gears a little bit, because the air quality world's a little bit different, but we do have, in essence, a similar end message, which is, we're really just trying to make sure if marijuana facilities are going to go in in this community, that there's proactive efforts to make sure environmental rules and regulations are properly followed. So from an air quality perspective, there's a few different areas. So one is, are just the growing operations. One concern there from the air quality side is that the plants themselves, like any plant does, it emits volatile compounds naturally. Where the concern comes in with marijuana is that the concentration of these volatile compounds is higher, and since, for indoor operations, since they can be concentrated indoors, there's these higher emission of natural volatile compounds, and sometimes it might be just emitted from a similar stack. That's where it starts to look more like an industrial source from our standpoint, as opposed to an outdoor grow operation that might look more like a regular farm, where the plants are more dispersed and the air emissions are spread out. I will say on that point, we're still in early stages of evaluating how much emissions really are possible from these facilities, and this is something going on countrywide. We've talked to our colleagues in Colorado, where it's been legal for five years now, and they're still trying to get a good handle on what the actual quantity of emissions from these grow operations can be. So this is something that we're not regulating yet, but it's something we're keeping our eye on, and something we want people to be aware of, is that as a potential concern in communities, and something that we might be regulating in the future. Another area are the processing operations. So, right, this is where they take the plants and process them in the final products, so you know, there's the flower, or the buds that are created from the marijuana plant, those are usually made into the smokeable products, but then there's also the trim, so the leaves and stalks, where operations will use solvents to extract the THC from these leaves or other components of the plant. And so there's some potential environmental concerns, depending on what solvents are being used in these processes, right? We found that, we went to one facility that was using a propane-butane mix, and we've heard that that might be the industry standard, and really where the air quality concerns come in there is that these solvents are being properly managed, right? Like that they're not just evaporating into ambient air, or being mismanaged on-site. And there are ways for the industry to handle those properly, but from our perspective, we just want to make sure that's happening up front, and that these operations aren't setting up with potentially hazardous use of these solvents during the extraction process. And unfortunately, on the air quality side, again, that's an area that we're still evaluating the applicability of our regulatory programs to those systems. We're currently in the process of determining whether they would require permits from our air quality division, but it's definitely something we're keeping our eye on, and we should, you know, be making those determinations sooner rather than later. And then, another area of concern for air quality, and one that's probably the most controversial, is odors. So, you know, these facilities have the potential to have, you know, strong or pungent odor, depending on the size of the operation, that can pose a nuisance to surrounding communities. The DEAGLE does have regulations that control odors in communities, but for something like marijuana, we're actually currently deferring to local authorities. So this is something especially of note to the city council here, is that right now, if odor complaints come to us, we are redirecting people to cities. I know that might be a point of tension for many right now, but the fact of the matter is, we also don't have the time or resources to be sending people out to every single community in the state as these roll in. But something we are currently developing to aid cities and townships and municipalities in this, is guidance. So we're currently working on odor control plan guidance for municipalities to adopt. So really what this would look like is, and this is what we're kind of recommending people go towards, is before these facilities go in, having an odor control plan. So having a plan in how they will deal with odors, or how they will mitigate them, so that, you know, there's the most minimal amount of odor possible, and it is possible to do that. Activated carbon control systems are the industry standard in really reducing odors from the facility, and we visited a facility that is using them, even just without there being a regulatory requirement to do so, just because they want to be responsible citizens as well. So there are ways to control odor, it's just a matter of the facilities being aware of them ahead of time, and putting those systems in place before they open up in communities. And even if we might not be going out and inspecting those odor complaints, we do want to be a resource, we want cities or municipalities to be able to reach out to us with any questions about odors, or how they can handle them in their communities, it's just that we might not be going out and inspecting every single source that we get a complaint for. So those are really some of the main areas in the air quality world. I mean, the key points really from our end is that we're only concerned, from air quality perspective, with really the large industrial sources. Air quality concerns from just 10 plants at a home, or even a small grow or processing operation, is likely less of a concern from our air quality regulations standpoint, because we typically only regulate larger sources of emissions. But then, the other key point really here is that our regulations do apply to marijuana sources that meet our threshold, similar to any other industrial source, we're not treating them any differently, right? That they, we're still assessing the applicability, but if it's found that they're emitting at quantities high enough, they will be subject to our regulations. So, I know it's probably a lot of information right now, but that's really where we stand on the air quality side of things.
Do we have any questions from council for DEAGLE? Move on.
So, I need to get a clear understanding. What we're really seeing is that you basically need permits, and it's a step-by-step process. Even though people are growing it in their homes, there's still a step-by-step process right or wrong.
The permitting process, yeah, regardless of how you go through it, there's a step-by-step procedure that you follow through for all the permitting. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
I mean, I guess, so from the air quality side, and it might differ for water, I will say, if you're doing, there is a difference between just the homeowner who might be doing this, they wouldn't be subject to our air quality regulations, we're just concerned with an industrial source. Some of the water regulations might be different in that, but really, the main concern is these large industrial sources of growing and processing and things like that.
Yeah, everything is a process.
Yeah.
Except for, probably.
Probably, yeah, yeah. And, I mean, the key point really is that trying to get ahead of that now too, before these recreational facilities start popping up everywhere, like, yes, it is a process. So getting ahead of it now, and starting to think about it now, is really the key point we're trying to hit home.
For floodplains, the process is very similar to a homeowner as to a business. For instance, if I'm a homeowner and I want to build an outbuilding so that I can grow my plants in the outbuilding, and I'm in the floodplain, you would need a permit for that. Or if you wanted to remodel your house, and it was in the floodplain, so that you could grow lots of plants in your house, or do whatever you wanted to do, and it was a substantial improvement, then you would be, you would have to bring it up to the current floodplain codes. So it's the same for flood, the floodplain applies, the floodplain regulations apply whether or not it's a residential development or a commercial development.
The first step is knowledge, is understanding, and that And that, that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to get a clear understanding. So I thank you. I thank you.
I do have one to follow up. From what you were saying, when you do not, when the state isn't going to regulate it, it's left to the cities or the communities to do the regulation. Is that correct?
At least for odors, that's what I was getting at. I mean, and I guess in general for some of our programs, that might be the case. But yeah, for odors, the state isn't regulating it, so we are leaving it up to the municipalities.
We have another, some more questions.
Yeah, just to comment to the, what the mayor just stated. Bay City does have that written into their ordinance, the carbon filters and other situations for odor. So I just want to state that.
Does that put you in a good spot then too, that some cities, we've seen in Colorado, for instance, have then just modified their existing odor regulations to make sure it's clear that it applies to marijuana, but yeah.
And for the floodplain issues, the city's already participating in the program. They already apply the Michigan Building Code, so that all currently already applies. It's just that a lot of the folks looking to be part of the marijuana industry are not always aware of the floodplain regulations.
It is important to note for other issues such as wetlands, if you do have wetland development, if you do have anything that involves a stream, that does come through the state. That's not going to be something that the city itself would be responsible for unless you were to go through the process of developing your own ordinance, which I don't believe you have at this point. So, so this is a really good example. There's a lot of moving parts with the environmental regulatory process on this. And having a good, a good plan going forward is really important, so.
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
One more question.
Hi, Caitlin, I think this question is actually going to end up going over to our city attorney. You mentioned local complaints about air quality are handled locally. But the situation could exist easily in Saginaw. The air quality problem is just outside our borders. But the complaint could come from a city resident. Do you have any recommendations on that or what would our city attorney be looking at?
Yeah, and I could see where legal counsel might be recommended in a situation like that. But I think our perspective would be that wherever the facility that the source of the odors is originating from should be handling the odor issues, you know, in their own community. But again, I think there's a lot to still be worked out with that. And we're still in the process of developing our guidance on how odors should be handled. So it's a work in process even from our end. So if issues come up, then don't hesitate to ever reach out to us too if there's further need for input from us in the future if a specific instance arises, I guess.
I've got another question. So we're talking about the odor of the facilities, the processing, and medical marijuana has been in place right now. Is there a location where we've had any complaints to the DEQ for this industry? And second part of that question would be is I'd like to be able to go and visit that area if I could, if there is something being grown. And the reason why I say that is over the weekend I did make a trip up to Bay City and visited one of their facilities on Wilder Road, which is an indoor facility, just to kind of get my, my head around exactly what, what we're dealing with here. Thank you.
So you're asking like if we've gotten complaints about specific, yeah. We technically, I don't think are supposed to release the information if we receive complaints. Yeah, so, but also at this point, we haven't received complaints as much about general facilities, I can say, and more just at this point, concerns about them going in is really what we're dealing with so far. We haven't received as many complaints yet.
So part of my question was too is I'd like to actually go, are they an indoor facility right now? Do you know? I mean, I'm unfamiliar with, and I'll, if you don't know the answer, I will check this out and I'll dig into it. But I was just kind of looking to maybe visit an area where the marijuana is being grown.
Oh, right, okay. So, yeah, so one place you can see facilities that have been licensed by the state. If you go to the Marijuana Regulatory Agencies webpage, they have a map of the licensed facilities and what type they are. So that'd probably be the best resource for you. So you can see if it's a processor, a grower, a registered lab, they have all the licenses they've issued on there. And at that point, that's only medical facilities, obviously no recreational ones have been licensed, but.
I will point out, there are some people here who may be able to answer some of these kinds of questions. So they could be done privately afterwards, but we, it is the time right now. But one gentleman by the name of Trevor Wiznuski is here. Mr. Wiznuski, will you raise your hand, please? All right. He is involved with these facilities and probably can answer some of the questions. And there is a consultant, a consultant by the name of David Rosensky. He is not here, but someone is here for them. Can they raise their hands, please? Do you have them here? Pardon me? Yes, I understand, but can you identify yourselves for the, for the members of people here? All right, so if anybody has questions later, there's two people they can talk to. All right? All right.
I want to ask a question. You guys are here because of the air, water, and the flooding. What issues have you heard of in the state of Michigan or anywhere? Have you guys done any research on what type of chemicals are leaching back into our, into the water? What issues are people having with the air quality after these plants are being grown? I mean, what, what's the issues?
Go ahead. I mean, I guess from an air quality perspective, one of the best case studies, I would say, isn't in Michigan yet, but in Denver, Colorado, just because it's been legal there for five years. And one of the air quality concerns they have in particular, and I mentioned the volatile compounds that are naturally emitted from the plants. And really where they've started to see a concern with that is that these facilities are locating, you know, in existing industrial areas, right, right in the city of Denver. And if, you know, we don't regulate trees because that would be unnecessary. And they emit volatile compounds as well, but they're far out of the city. What the concern is when you get this high concentration of plant right next to major roadways and right next to power plants, they're starting to see it exasperating existing air issues. So it's not that it's creating a new pollution problem, but it's just contributing to ones that already exist because they're locating nearby other sources of pollution. So that's one of the concerns we have going forward is just to, you know, keep our eye out as that emerges. We haven't seen those issues pop up yet. It seems like a lot of the sources that at least are licensed are in more remote areas so far. We haven't seen as many urban, I mean, they're in a city, but not right downtown or right next to a power plant so far, you know, but.
All right.
Gets it, your question at least for air quality, but.
With respect to the chemicals that are used throughout all the different processes, unfortunately, that's really neither air nor water. The Waste Division that works with our department looks at all of those issues. And we can get that information so that the city has a contact to get some better information. I don't want to give incorrect data. But I know it has been looked at, and I know I've seen, Caitlin and I have both seen that information. Just unfortunately not our area of expertise. But we'll follow up and make sure that we get the city to contact on that information for you.
So what you're saying is that maybe that the wastewater treatment plants would probably have to use more chemicals to treat the wastewater that's coming from the marijuana plants?
I'm not really sure how much wastewater you'll see. I think a lot of these processes, especially on the more indoor, larger grows, I think they're going to use reuse, recycle. And that might be a good question for right over here. Forgive me, I forgot your name already. I know we've already met. Those are good questions that we've already talked about once before. A lot of that water gets recycled right in-house, so it doesn't get discharged. There isn't a municipal avenue for that to enter the system.
If I can point out, there is a handout that has been provided regarding solid waste and hazardous waste regulations for growing and processing marijuana. That may be something that would be, you could speak to as well?
Yeah, so I brought that today and just on behalf of some of our colleagues back in Lansing. I don't actually know too much. I will say the one key message I know from the Waste Division is that there are already existing state regulations specific to marijuana waste that specify that marijuana waste, the plant waste must be made unusable and unrecognizable prior to disposable, disposal, which means that it has, the plants should be ground up and mixed with at least 50% of some other type of waste. So the final waste mixture should be 50% marijuana and at least 50% something else. So that's really the key message I know they have from the waste side. Unfortunately, yeah, I can't speak too much of that, but we're glad to provide contact information for some of our colleagues there.
This is from the Michigan.gov website, is that correct?
Right, yes, it is. And right now you'll find it on the Marijuana Regulatory Agencies website, not DEAGLES. But yes, it is online.
Thank you for that very informational presentation and talk. So next up, we are going to have Lori Srgin, sure. Now I know how people feel when they have to say my last name. From McLaren Health, talking about health aspects in regard to more information on marijuana.
All right, thank you for letting me come here to speak today. My name is Lori Skrzynski. Currently, I'm the manager of OB and Women's Health at McLaren Bay Region. I've been a nurse for 20 years, spent the majority of my career with maternal-child health nursing, and did a decade of public health nursing in the tri-city area. So I'm very passionate about women's and children's health and, and the impact that marijuana may have. But today, I'm just going to focus on the facts and give those to you so that you can make an educated decision. So in Michigan, there's two different ways of using marijuana. Right now, there's the medical marijuana that folks are going out to facilities to purchase. It's used to treat qualifying medical conditions such as cancer, epilepsy, glaucoma, HIV/AIDS, and mainly severe pain. But now we're trying to focus on retail marijuana, which is really for personal use. The active ingredient in marijuana is THC, which is a chemical responsible for most of marijuana's psychological effects and physical effects. Within minutes, the THC and other substances that can be found in marijuana can cause short-term effects. I've listed some of these. Fast heart rate, increased blood pressure, red eyes, dry mouth, increased appetite or the munchies, poor coordination, and slowed reaction time. These effects usually last about three to four hours. However, marijuana stays in your system longer, especially if you smoke it because it's absorbed into your fat. During pregnancy, when marijuana is smoked or eaten, the chemicals reach the fetus by crossing the placenta. Marijuana exposure may disrupt the brain development of the fetus. And some studies suggest that both marijuana and cigarettes during pregnancy can increase the risk of preterm birth. There are possible risks with marijuana use, including babies that are smaller at birth. Babies might be born stillborn. Research also suggests that there's an increased risk of stillbirth if marijuana is used with cigarettes. We're not sure if that's based off of just smoking in general. Marijuana that passes through to your baby during your pregnancy may impact brain development, like I said. It could cause learning disabilities in the future. It's been shown that children have attention span issues, learning issues. They just may be having a harder time at school being exposed to marijuana in utero. And overall, the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists suggests that women should not use marijuana during pregnancy. Then during breastfeeding, potentially anything that the mom eats, drinks, smokes can pass into the breastmilk. Therefore, the baby could be exposed to THC or marijuana in the breastfeeding. If a woman's breastfeeding, THC and other chemicals can affect the baby. The baby during brain development in utero and even as an infant is depositing a lot of fat into the brain. This helps make, makes all the different neuron connections, learning, brain development. So if the baby is being exposed to marijuana through breastmilk, it's being absorbed into those fat tissues in the brain. And then because it stays in fat, it can be in the body for a long time. So you may have heard of moms, if they drink alcohol, we, we suggest that they pump and dump their breastmilk during a certain period of time. But because the THC from marijuana is in the mom's fat, it's actually being excreted into her breastmilk for a longer period of time. So the pumping and dumping phenomenon can't help decrease exposure to a baby. And then most studies suggest that a significant absorption of THC is going into infants from the breastmilk. And they've tested babies. And even after the last feeding with breastmilk that had THC in it, the babies have tested positive for marijuana up to two to three weeks after that exposure. Now what about children? Parents that are using marijuana potentially could have impaired parenting abilities taking care of their children. Marijuana can make people feel very sleepy when they get high, they, which can impact how they interact with their children. They might not be aware of the needs of their children. So are their children hungry? Do they need their diaper changed? Do they just need some cuddle time? They may miss opportunities with their children to play with them, interact with them, read books with them, and just learn about their world around them. But also, it may be causing a parent to make some bad judgment calls. Is that parent taking that baby to a doctor's appointment while using marijuana? Can they safely operate a vehicle? And then the secondhand smoke, being exposed to THC in the home can cause some psychological effects just on the parent, but also the children being exposed, which can absorb, get absorbed into their fat once again because they're on a high-fat diet and lead to learning disabilities in school. There's also toxins in regard to using marijuana. Marijuana can be considered similar to smoking cigarettes. So there could be some carcinogens, so which are chemicals that can cause cancer and, and lead to other health problems in the future. There's just a lot that needs to be studied on, on exposure to THC. It's also important to remember that marijuana can affect children a little bit differently than adults. Right now, if we compare the products that are out there to several decades ago, there's higher THC levels. Really, the science behind it is amazing when you look into it, very fascinating. But there's higher THC levels. There's a chance that your child could get some type of overdose or poisoning from marijuana products. And there's marijuana products out there that kind of look like treats. There's edibles out there. There's really a lot more exposure for a child in the, in the environment these days. Now adolescents, this is really the group that I'm worried about in regard to health effects. Marijuana affects their brain, brain development as well. When marijuana users begin using as teenagers, the drug may reduce attention, memory, and learning functions and affect how the brain could build connections between the areas necessary for these functions. Marijuana's effects on these abilities may last a long time or may even be permanent. This means that someone who uses marijuana may not do as well in school and may have trouble remembering things. The impact depends on many factors and is different for each person. It also depends on the amount of THC in the marijuana, like how potent or the, or the strength, how often it's used, how early did they start using it, and maybe what other substance they might be using it with, like alcohol, tobacco, et cetera. Developing brains like in teenagers are just very susceptible to the hurtful effects of marijuana. And it has been linked to depression, anxiety, and there is a higher rate of suicide with teenagers that use marijuana. Environmental exposure, so secondhand smoke doubles a baby's risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Now, you could say that's the same information you get from cigarette smoke as well. But it has been proven that babies can die from smoke exposure. The known health risks of secondhand smoke exposure to, to marijuana include heart issues, lungs. They just raise a question, can marijuana smoke be as dangerous as cigarette smoke, which we already know? While there's very little data right now on what marijuana smoke does, there's certainly a concern that it a concern that it is dangerous to kids. Recent studies have found strong associations between those who said there was someone in the home who used marijuana or a caretaker who used marijuana and the child having detectable levels of THC. The psychoactive ingredient in marijuana can cause children to have potentially negative health effects, including developmental problems and learning problems. Thirdhand smoke is really the chemicals that you have to realize after smoking land on your surfaces in your home or in your building. Those toxins from the smoke become trapped in the walls, the ceilings, and the floors of rooms where smoking took place. And research has shown that thirdhand smoke can remain in your building or in your home up to two months after smoking. And it can be disturbed just by moving objects or trying to clean. And that puts some of those chemicals in the air, which could re-expose your child or anyone else in your home. And then mental health. Marijuana use, especially frequent daily or near-daily use, and especially in high doses, can cause disorientation and sometimes causes unpleasant thoughts, feelings, or anxiety, or even paranoia. Marijuana users are significantly more likely than non-users to develop temporary psychosis. So that's like not knowing what is real, hallucinations, paranoia, and then long-lasting mental disorders, including schizophrenia. Marijuana use has also been linked to depression and anxiety, and like I had said earlier, especially in teenagers, having a higher rate of suicide. All right, lungs. So this would be specifically for smoked marijuana, since it can be ingested several ways. Marijuana affects the lungs by decreasing blood flow. It can harm the lung tissues. It causes scarring and damage, kind of similar to cigarette smoke, especially to the blood... small blood vessels. And it contains the same toxins, irritants, and carcinogens potentially as tobacco smoke. Smoking marijuana can also lead to a greater risk of bronchitis, cough, increased phlegm production. But they usually see symptoms decrease if they stop smoking. And then the heart. There really has to be more studies in regard to heart health with marijuana. Right now, they're saying, you know, physically, it does increase heart rate, so potentially if you already have a heart problem, it could exacerbate that or make it worse. But there has been an increase with stroke and heart attacks with marijuana users in general. Just more information has to be researched in regard to that. And then addiction. About one in 10 marijuana users will become addicted. For people who begin using... Whoops, sorry. For people who begin using before the age of 18, the number rises to one in six will become addicted. Some signs of someone who's addicted to marijuana would be unsuccessful efforts to quit using the product, giving up important activities with their family and friends just so they can use the marijuana, using marijuana even if it's known to cause problems with their work or their education. And then people who are addicted to marijuana may also be at a higher risk of having negative consequences of using the drugs, like attention issues, memory issues, learning issues. Some people who are addicted need to smoke it more and more to get the same high. And it's important to be aware that the amount of THC in marijuana has increased over the past few decades. The higher the THC content, the stronger the effects on the brain. And some of the methods of marijuana, like dabbing or edibles, may deliver very high levels of THC to the users. What I've seen is researchers really do not know yet the full extent of the consequences when the body and the brain, especially in a developing brain like a child or teenager, is exposed to high concentrations of THC or how recent increases in the potency affect the risk of someone becoming addicted. The concept of marijuana as a gateway drug, however, seems not to be true. I will say with most of the research I've read, that marijuana users do not go on to start using harder drugs. It's important to remember also that anybody can become addicted to a substance, so anything can become addicted... or anyone can become addicted. But some things that may be precursors would be family history, do you have a history of a mental disorder, peer pressure, loneliness, social isolation, lack of family involvement, drug availability, and then socioeconomic status. So overall, I just want to summarize that marijuana is the most commonly-used illegal drug right now in the United States, with approximately 22.2 million users each month. Research shows that about one in 10 marijuana users will become addicted. Marijuana use directly affects the brain, specifically the parts of the brain responsible for memory, learning, attention, decision-making, coordination, emotions, and reaction time. Developing brains like those in babies and childrens and teenagers are especially susceptible to the adverse effects of marijuana. Eating foods or drinking beverages that contain marijuana have some different risks than smoking marijuana, but they include a greater risk of poisoning. And long-term effects... or long-term use or frequent use of marijuana has been linked to increased risk of psychosis or schizophrenia in some users. And using marijuana during pregnancy and breastfeeding may increase the baby's risk for developmental problems. And I did include a list of several references from CDC, ACOG, learning a lot from Denver and Colorado since they've been dealing with this for the past five years. So I would encourage you to look at my resources. I know that I've given this PowerPoint to Vicky, so I would give permission to please share my PowerPoint with everyone on the board. All right, any questions?
Yes, hi Lori. Excuse me. In particular with the possible risks for infants and young children, urban areas like Saginaw are still in a continuing battle with lead exposure environmentally. Have there been any studies or are you aware of anything where there's negative synergies in adding marijuana exposure to possible lead exposure?
I haven't looked in particular in regard to that, but it's a good point. The one thing to note, though, lead tends to be deposited into calcium, so bones, where marijuana is deposited into fat. So I don't know if there'll be like a correlation or if they exacerbate each other. But certainly, they... Both of those types of absorption or poisoning of children do lead to similar things such as learning disabilities. So that's a good question. I think I could definitely look into that.
Question here.
Medical side of it, like people are being prescribed this. So we heard a lot of the negative connotations about it, especially when it comes to smoking. But what about when there's like children that may be prescribed this? I mean, is there any data about that? And they might not be smoking. They may be taking droplets or tinctures or edibles or different things like that. So do we have any data about that?
I don't have any data in regard to that, but really, if you look into Canada, Canada's kind of far... farther ahead of us with the medical marijuana. And there's definitely some childhood diseases, specifically epilepsy, where they're using those tinctures or those drops, that they have seen. The benefits outweigh the risks, basically. So I would have to look more into that, but I will recognize that it does work with certain medical conditions. I think what I was trying to focus on today was more of just the facts of how does it impact your body? But I will not say that it doesn't work for certain health conditions.
Any other questions? Yes.
I guess I just want to make a note, kind of going on what Councilman Bryant just said. There are different levels of the THC that is in an edible, and that was not brought out here today, so I do want our audience to hear that, especially in treating anti-anxiety, where it's not really a high that the patient feels, but it's more of a calming effect. And so I just wanted to add that to that. But also, too, during your presentation, you mentioned suicide rates. Do you know where you're benchmarking those suicide rates against other drugs and/or alcohol in the teen industry? And I'd also like to point out to the fact that in the recreational medical area, that under 18, as any other, would not be able to buy the drug.
Right. I don't have the suicide rates in front of me to say, okay, alcohol use versus opiate use versus marijuana use, what does it... How does it all correlate? Or if it's worse with marijuana? So I would have to delve into that further. But, you know, what's interesting, too, is we say use marijuana, it may help with being an anti-type of anxiety medication, but teenagers in general don't do well with some of the antidepressants that are out there, too. So it's something to do with the development of the brain at that time period during their life. So certainly, I could delve into that a little bit further. But yeah, you're... I was trying to focus more on what could happen with personal use of marijuana versus the medical use. Medical use certainly has a position here in the state of Michigan, and it's regulated, and I appreciate that. But also with the THC levels, I wanted to add to that, with the edibles, that would be regulated as well. So I would appreciate that would happen here in the state of Michigan.
Just a point on that, Mayor. That's a really good point to bring out, and I'm glad you're bringing that out for the audience to hear because when... Because it's going to be all around us. It is legal in the state of Michigan. And regulation, I feel very strongly towards because then it's not a black market, you know, what you're getting when it comes to referring to how it's being grown, whether it's pesticides or different things that are being added to the marijuana. So that's a really good point to bring out there. Thank you.
I just had a question about the CBD and the THC. Can you talk to us for a quick second about that? Because that's a lot of the calls that I've received, like at the Family Video Store, they sell CBD. And I think people think that that's, you know, the psychoactive component. I don't believe that's the case, but can you just talk about the difference? Because you can buy that at Walmart, and we're getting... I mean, I've been getting calls about that.
CBD oil does not have THC in it. You will not get high off of CBD oil. So it's basically a derivative of the plant. You know, you could kind of put it in the same category as folks using essential oils out here in the community. So CBD oil has been shown, or at least there's a lot of talk out on the internet about it can be used even to decrease arthritis, get you off the diabetic medications, things like that. But it can't get you high. So I would kind of put it into the more of the homeopathic type of medications that are out there. So essentially, like using an oil naturally to make you not have a health condition.
You say you've been in the nursing field for over 20 years, and now this marijuana thing come up. Do you understand, or can you explain to us on how alcohol and drugs stunt people's growth? You know, particularly in urban neighborhoods. If... I understand that if you have a kid who's 16, 17 years old, it kind of stunts your growth if you're being an adult. What would happen if they... We compound that with alcohol and marijuana. Do you understand... Can you explain on that a little bit?
Well, let's just go back to fetal growth. So if a mom is pregnant and she's using and that fetus is being exposed, we're seeing more and more of those babies be born with low birth weight and they're just smaller. So they really don't get a good start from the get-go. And then if they continue to use those substances, it's almost as if they're not getting good nutritional intake. You know, you're drinking alcohol, you're smoking, you may not have the right choices with what your nutritional intake is, and that can lead to potentially poor growth or poor development. I would definitely have to look into it a little bit further to see, are we seeing an effect on growth hormone production? Because that is what really makes a teenager grow. If it's impacting the pituitary gland, I haven't seen anything like that out there in regard to that.
It says that people that smoke marijuana want to eat snack food. Snack food make you fat, then the THC stays in the body longer because you overweight. Then all of a sudden, you have a kid, and now that kid's going to school, and he got a... He may be a little bit slower because his parents are smoking and stuff like that, and it just seem like we're just compounding one problem on top of another.
Right, potentially, yeah, yeah. We could really put it that way and say, okay, you're just making poor choices. You know, we already have, you know, epidemic right now in our society with being overweight. So we're already kind of behind the eight ball as is. So if someone's using marijuana, they're going to have that in their system much longer and potentially make poor choices in regard to nutrition.
Have you done any studies on recently, within the last six months? I know they've been publicized a lot of things where there's been an increase of people dying from marijuana because of the substance or all the stuff that they put in it. Have you done any research on that one yet?
I was on the CDC website this week, and they really are standing with... They really don't point to any specific deaths in regard to poisoning from marijuana. They... Colorado in particular has seen an uptick with calls, like to their Poison Control Center, about folks potentially overdosing. But as far as deaths, CDC really isn't publishing anything at this point, when I was on there this week.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm done. Thank you very much, Lori.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation from Clyde Robinson, the city attorney for the city of Kalamazoo. And I will tell you, from the League's perspective, Clyde is one of our go-tos, that we have been working on this issue to try and interpret the law and then provide resources to our members and communities across the state with the best amount of information at a level field, and so they can make the best choices. So Clyde?
Again, good morning. I'd like to do several things. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I'd like to tell you how we got to where we are today and what the options you might have as a community and as the city council going forward to address marijuana regulation. So first off, a little bit about myself. I... This is... Yes, this is early May. So it was roughly 40 years ago, I graduated from the University of Michigan Law School. And after passing the bar, I... My first... I clerked for a little while, but my first real job was as an assistant city attorney in Battle Creek. I worked for Battle Creek, became... Eventually became the city attorney in Battle Creek, and then left Battle Creek to become the city attorney in Kalamazoo, where I was born and raised and grew up. So I have been with the city of Kalamazoo since March of 2008. I have been pretty involved in the issue of marijuana. I have... This was issued... This document was issued by the Michigan Municipal League before the proposition was being voted on last fall. And I was... I had some assistants. I had some people who helped edit and proof-edit. But basically, I'm the author of this document, and it's available on the MML's website. Additionally, there is a publishing house that is a consortium of the law schools in Michigan called the Institute of Continuing Legal Education. And they put out a Michigan municipal law textbook for attorneys. And I'm a co-editor of that, and I have contributed to several chapters, including the chapter on marijuana. In fact, I just finished that work a couple of weeks ago in terms of bringing it up to speed. And again, while I did have some assistance in drafting that and editing it, in particular, Professor Jerry Fisher from the Cooley Law School, and Mike Fisher, who is a chief assistance attorney in Livonia, assisted me. But again, I did a lot of the work in terms of describing what happens now that we've adopted this statute by the voters in last November. So with that as a background, I think I'm fairly well-versed in the topic. One of the things I want to touch on, just as a kind of in passing, because the remarks of the last speaker, I want to bring something to your attention. I see there's a law enforcement officer in the back of the room, and this new law that Michigan voters adopted presents several challenges. And one of the concerns that the last speaker raised was the safety concern for young children in a home where there's marijuana being consumed. Well, here's... And again, voters knew that when they were voting on Prop 1 last November, they said, "We're going to legalize marijuana." I would venture to say that 98% of the people who voted did not read I would venture to say that 98% of the people who voted did not read the entire act. And one of the sections of the act says this, "A person shall not be denied custody of or visitation with a minor for conduct that is permitted by this act unless the person's behavior is such that it creates an unreasonable danger to the minor that can be clearly articulated and substantiated." I don't know what that means. It is going to be a challenge for family court judges when there is a divorce involving children and there's marijuana being used by the parents in terms of he or she uses marijuana, they're placing the kids in danger. Well, is it an unreasonable danger? Can you clearly articulate and substantiate that danger? Uh, so I'm just saying that there may be some concerns about children in a home where marijuana is being used, but the statute says, I, you can't deny me, uh, custody or visitation because of that by itself. So again, something to be aware of. Now, I don't think very many, very few people know that. Divorce attorneys probably know it, but the general public doesn't. So with that kind of as a, a lead-in, um, I'll go through my presentation. Quick overview, how did we get to where we are today? To, it began in 2008 with a voter-initiated statute that was, uh, improved by the Michigan voters, the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. And basically that said, if you have a qualifying illness, you can go to a physician and get a certificate. It's not a prescription. It is, I certify that you are eligible for one of the various types of maladies either mentioned in the act or permitted by administrative rule, that you may go and get marijuana for your, uh, problem. But what happened is that there was this, this act was put together by a think tank, uh, marijuana advocacy group in Washington DC and there's several holes in the act. One of which is how were patients, where were they supposed to go to get the marijuana? Or you could grow it yourself, you could associate yourself with a caregiver, but where do you, if you're growing it yourself or your caregiver, going to get the product, the seeds in order to grow it? Because this is still unlawful in federal law. There were no dispensaries. Now, I know that there were dispensaries that cropped up throughout Michigan in several communities, but basically they were unlawful because there was no law in Michigan that said you could operate a commercial operation to sell processed, grow marijuana. So that was the gap. It took a little while, but in 2016, the legislature decided to fill the gap with what is called the, uh, Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act or the MMFLA. It is a significant act that basically said, we are going to permit growers, we're going to permit processors, we're going to permit, uh, provisioning centers, transporters for both the marijuana between the various types of facilities and cash, and we're going to have testing centers to make sure that the product that's being offered to the public meets certain criteria and is safe for use. So it created a seed to sale process and, and one of the, the other act that was passed at the same time was the Marijuana Tracking Act, which required that any marijuana that goes into the system is going to be identified with a barcode and so you know that who's producing it, under what conditions it was produced, who tested it. Uh, there is a, a, a documentation in terms of what are the, any impurities in it, do they, make sure they don't exceed whatever's permitted? And so you know where the product was coming from. Municipalities were not required to opt into if they did not want, if you did not want to have commercial marijuana facilities in your community, you didn't have to do anything. You sat on your hands and you said, we don't have to do anything. You're not going to come in here until we say yes. But if you do opted in, and I, I, my understanding Saginaw has not, Kalamazoo did, you were granted a great degree of local control. You couldn't do anything that the act, uh, you couldn't prohibit anything the act permitted. You couldn't prohibit anything that the rules permitted. You couldn't regulate price, you couldn't regulate purity. Beyond that, as a municipality, you had a blank canvas. You could decide where in your community these facilities could locate. You could decide whether to license them or not. And if you're going to license them, what regulations were you going to impose upon them in order to make sure that they didn't create a problem for your community in terms of security, odor control? What are they putting in the waste stream? Uh, how are they going to store, um, the, the chemicals and, and herbicides and the like that they use? Municipalities had a great deal of, of, uh, ability to regulate these businesses that were coming into their community. Then last year, we, and I should say between 2016, when this was passed, there was an attempt by the marijuana advocates to say, we want to legalize marijuana in Michigan. There were three ballot initiatives that were seeking to get, uh, signatures to get on the ballot in 2016. All of them failed. None of them got on the ballot, primarily because they were competing with one another. So then the marijuana industry and their attorneys and their lobbyists got smart. They said, let's combine our efforts. Rather than fragment, let's see if we can pull ourselves together and get something on the ballot in 2018 and that's what they did. And what they have is, is called the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. It was touted as regulate marijuana like alcohol. Now, I don't know how many of you are familiar how Michigan regulates the alcohol industry, but believe me, nothing in that act regulates marijuana like alcohol. But that's how they sold it. So now voters said, oh, we're going to legalize marijuana, just like Colorado, just like Washington, like Nevada, like California and, um, Alaska, Vermont, Massachusetts, Maine. We're going to be on the forefront, we're on the cutting edge. So they, this is what we're going to do. But as I said, how many voters read the complete statute that was being proposed? It was just, we're going to get marijuana if you're 21 and older. So that's what we have. We now have legalized marijuana for people who are 21 and older. Municipalities are automatically in it. You are required to permit recreational businesses in your community unless you opt out. Completely the opposite of, of the, of the 2016 statute in which you had to opt in. Now you have to opt out. And the other thing is that, uh, the, the act did is it legalized, the, what was discussed through the last speaker's presentation, CBD products. CBD products mean that has less than 0.3% THC. That means there is some small amount of THC permitted in CBD products. And I was at a seminar, uh, a couple of weeks ago in Grand Rapids, talking about how employers are going to deal with the issue. And just because an employee says, all I did was use CBD, they still may test positive for marijuana. So, uh, for, for the THC component. So, and the other thing is industrial hemp, uh, that was actually permitted by, uh, Congress. They passed the 2018 Farm Bill that set this standard and states were permitted to opt into it, which Michigan did. Uh, it adopted its own, uh, industrial hemp statute and it basically says, uh, municipalities, you may not regulate industrial hemp. So that's why you see the CBD, uh, advertisements in your community today. Before I go into this, let's go, turn the clock back a little bit to an observation made in one of the first medical marijuana cases that appeared before the Michigan Court of Appeals. And this was a concurrence by, uh, Judge O'Connell in the, in the Redden case. And he said, "Medical Marijuana Act was the first step towards legalization. And however, the act is not very well-written. It's inartfully written." And that has been the case in terms of, there's been some legislative changes to it, but that's what he said. He, back in 2010, and what a prescient, uh, observation. That's where we find ourselves today. I submit that the, the new act, the MRTMA suffers from the same deficits that the MMA did. So what did we, what did we do? What did Michigan voters do in November? It created, uh, six or maybe seven types of maro, recreational marijuana establishments. Now, under the old, under the MMFLA, the, the medical side, there's only five. And I'll tell you where, where they are the same. First, grower. Three classes of grower, same under both acts, three classes, A, B, C. A is the kind of smaller grower, C is the bigger grower. But notice the difference. If you are under the recreational side, you can grow up to 2,000 plants. If you're a Class C grower, on the medical side, you can only grow 1,500 plants with a Class C license. Now, again, it astonishes me that when the people who put together the, the act that was voted on by the voters in November, they already had the 2016 bill in hand. That was already an, a statute in Michigan. Why not make the things the same? No, they didn't. So now you've got to know, this is my medical side, this is my recreational side and I can only have, I can have 100 plants on the recreational, but I can have up to 500 plants if I'm a Class A grower on the, on the, on the medical side. The other thing that didn't change processors, that's both same, uh, under both acts, a secure transporter, that is the, the, uh, people who are authorized to move the plant between the various types of facilities. They can also move cash between facilities, uh, but there's nothing in the new statute that requires their use. It was under the MMFLA, but not under the MRTMA. I, I expect that, um, the Bureau of Medical Regulation, or as I like to call it, bummer, will address that. Safety compliance facilities, uh, both the same, they're the ones that, that test the, the marijuana. And then a retailer. Now, under the medical, they're called a provisioning center. Under the recreational side, they're called a retailer. So there's a little bit difference in nomenclature. Retailers can only sell to people who are age 21 and above for recreational. If on the medical, you are capable, if you, if you qualify and you get your physician to give you the, uh, the certificate, as a minor, that is, or a young adult, you are minor with your parents' permission, a young adult 18 through 20 can get medical marijuana, but you won't be able to get recreational. Micro business, this is a whole new classification. This is, I think, intended to kind of like the mom and pop type of operation, a small operation. In fact, you get to a few more plants than you get if you were a Class A grower, um, and you may, uh, process, package and sell marijuana at a one-stop kind of shop. And then the catch-all one, any other type that Laura may come up with. I have no idea what that's going to be like, but they have the authority to create other types of recreational marijuana businesses. And again, unless you say no, that's coming into your community. So you have no idea exactly what might come up. So as I said, Laura has given a great deal of responsibility to fill the gaps. It has already been announced, it appeared in, um, I think most of the MLive papers, which I think Saginaw has an MLive paper, uh, Kalamazoo does as well, um, that Mr. Brisbane, who is now head of, of, uh, the Bureau of Marijuana Regulation, has indicated that they hope to have emergency rules in regard to recreational marijuana available by or soon after June 1st, with the ability for the state to start accepting applications for licensure for recreational marijuana businesses as early as September 1st or shortly thereafter. Under the statute, um, they had, Laura had until December. And when the new governor came in, she wanted that accelerated, didn't want to wait till the end of the year and it looks like the administrators are going to be able to do that. In part because they already have rules in place, um, the medical side, I would envision that the rules on, for the recreational will probably parallel what's already in existence for, uh, medical marijuana. In order to operate a recreational license, you need a state license. You don't necessarily need a local license. Um, I expect that Laura will set these standards, much as they have on the medical side. Um, and the other thing is that, and I don't know what, I have an idea what I think was meant, but again, this is something that appears in the statute. Laura is tasked with creating a plan to encourage participation in the marijuana industry by people from communities that have been disproportionately impacted by marijuana prohibition and enforcement and to positively impact those communities. So, uh, look, I don't know what, how that's going, what, what is that's going to entail, but Laura is charged with putting together an administrative rule to address this clause of the, the statute. One of the things that again, appears in the statute, you are not precluded, um, under the medical, if you've had some, uh, convictions in the past for, uh, drugs and controlled substances, you were precluded from getting a license. Not so on the recreational side. The only thing that you're precluded from getting a license for is if you were convicted for supplying, distribution to a minor. So if you were stopped on I-94 or I-75 with a van full of marijuana in the back and you were convicted, that doesn't preclude you from becoming a, a businessperson under the recreational side. I guess I question whether you want that type of individual to be somebody who's operating a business in your community, but that's what the statute says. Only if I, as long as I wasn't selling it to a minor. I may have been one of the biggest drug kingpins in the, in the state, but I can get my recreational marijuana license. The other thing is the state will issue, and this is in the act, everything I quote, end quote, is taken directly from the act. The state will issue a license as long as the proposed business location is in an area in your community that's not zoned exclusively for residential use and it's within at least 1,000 feet away from a pre-existing K through 12, uh, pri, public or private school. Now, I haven't looked at the city of Saginaw's zoning ordinance, but I would rather, cause I, but I know my communities, both in Battle Creek and, and Kalamazoo, and our residential zones generally weren't exclusively residential. Residential zones oftentimes permit schools, churches, parks, governmental buildings, those aren't residential uses. But unless it's exclusively residential, that means a marijuana business is entitled, under the statute, to locate in a residential zone. Do you want a marijuana grower, processor, even a, even a retailer to D in a residential neighborhood? But that's what the statute says. And the courts will interpret the language as it is written. It's pretty clear, it's, it's clear. I mean, how can, this is, this is not vague, it's not ambiguous, in an area zoned exclusively for residential use, it's maybe coming into your neighborhood. Uh, I've already indicated, uh, Public Act 641, adopted near the end of last legislative session, addresses industrial hemp and, and it specifically permits or precludes communities from regulating industrial hemp. As I said, you have to opt out of the recreational side. And if you do so, you, you should do it by ordinance. That's, again, it's not clear in the statute, but the statute seems to imply that you should do it by an ordinance as opposed to resolution. But here's the kicker. If you as a council decide to say, we're not going to opt out, we're just going to, because we're already in, we're going to remain in, your community, your, your voters can put together a petition drive asking that, that you do opt out and you can put it to a vote. Or limit the number of marijuana establishments. Didn't say limit the types, just says limit the number. So the other thing that is, again, not clear, let's say as you as a council decide to opt out. I, and again, I haven't looked at your charter, but if you have a referendum or initiative, can that decision be overturned? Is that a legislative decision which is maybe subject to referendum? Or is it an administrative decision that is not subject to referendum? And the other thing I would point out, the statute doesn't use the word referendum. It only says that if you decide to opt out, your, if you, I'm sorry, if you, if you decide not to opt out, voters can ask that a ballot proposition, an initiative be put on the ballot to opt out. It's not very, it's not very clear in terms of section six of the act, what, how that's all going to work out. I, my best guess is, again, using the plain language is no, there's nothing in, in regard to referenda. And so I think that if you And so I think that if you choose to opt out, I don't know that that is a decision that can be overturned at the ballot box by your voters. But I don't take that to the bank. That's likely to be tested in courts. And we won't get an answer to that, probably for another two or three years. So, what if you decide to opt in? Say, we're in any way, we're not going to, what can we do as a community? Well, as I said, you can't conflict with the current statute in terms of recreational, or the rules. Nor can you issue ordinance, or requirements, or standards that are unreasonably impracticable. Again, that's a term that is defined in the new law, but what does it mean? It is, the definition is below, and I'll say this. I did a LexisNexis search for the term "unreasonably impracticable." I found it used in two cases, or two sources. I think in 1934 Mississippi public nuisance case, which was of no assistance, and that term appears in the Colorado Constitution provision that permitted the recreational marijuana in Colorado. Oh, I said, okay, there must be some cases that have interpreted it in Colorado. Nope, there's no reported cases at this point in terms of what that phrase is, it means, or how it's been applied in Colorado. So it'll be up, we're writing again, our courts will be writing on a blank slate. But what the statute says is this, this is how it's defined. If the rule or your ordinance subjects a potential licensee to unreasonable risk. Now, what's unreasonable risk? Marijuana is a Schedule I substance at federal law. You're risking violating federal law anyway. But unreasonable risk, as opposed to, I guess, reasonable risk, or requires such a high investment of time, money, or other resources that a reasonably prudent businessman or business person would not operate the marijuana establishment. I guess, from my perspective, why would a reasonably prudent businessman get in the marijuana industry anyway? But be that as it may, that's the standard. And so, and as attorneys, we're used to the reasonable person test in terms of what is, what's the duty that you owe to another person and under tort law. So it's a reference to that. But they add all this other stuff that a reasonably prudent business person would not operate the establishment because of whatever requirements that are being imposed on him or her. Again, this section, this language, I think, almost begs to be litigated. You are permitted, under the statute, to have various regulations. You can have reasonable regulations on public signs. Again, for the attorneys in the audience, Reed versus Town of Gilbert, a 2015 U.S. Supreme Court case said you can't regulate on the basis of content. How can you regulate marijuana signs on the, you're going to be regulating on the basis of content? There is a possible, out there's another U.S. Supreme Court case, Central Hudson versus New York, in which, if it's, if you deem it as commercial speech, you might be able to regulate it, even though it's regulated on content. There are some Californian communities that have used the Central Hudson test as a way to avoid problems with the Reed versus Gilbert decision of the Supreme Court. But again, that is an area that's probably going to be litigated eventually. And likely, we'll have to go all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court before we get a definitive answer. So I'm saying there is a glimmer of hope. You might be able to regulate marijuana signs on the basis of content as long as you're doing on a Central Hudson approach, and you avoid Reed versus Gilbert. The other thing is, you may regulate time, place, manner, and operation of establishments. Now, again, going to, if you're an attorney, time, place, manner, you learned that in second year of law school, in constitutional law. Well, that's the First Amendment test. You can't yell "fire" in a crowded theater. Time, place, manner, you can't have a sound truck blaring on your streets at 3:00 in the morning. Reasonable time, place, manner. It's the First Amendment test, but now it's being applied to what you may do in terms of regulation. So is the time regulation meant to permit you to decide hours of days and days of the week that a business can operate? Does the place manner mean that you can really have some local zoning control, despite the earlier clause that said as long as it's, you can locate in a zone as long as it's not exclusively zoned for residential? And manner, are you able, what are you able to do in terms of manner? Does that mean you can say that we're going to institute odor controls? We're going to require lighting and security? We're going to, are you permitted to do some of those things? Are you able to, again, I said, under the medical, you couldn't regulate purity or price. Does regulate manner mean you can regulate the price in your, under your ordinance? You can on the medical side, but it seems to leave that open on the recreational side. What you also can do is, you could authorize the use of marijuana in public places under certain narrow circumstances. For instance, if you want to have, and this happened in a community in Van Buren County, which is adjacent to Kalamazoo. Everybody knows 4/20 is apparently a National Marijuana Day. And so the, I think it's the village of Bangor, which is located about 35 miles west of Kalamazoo on M-43, had their 4/20 celebration. And there were people who were openly smoking it in a tent. That the village said, yes, we'll permit that use publicly for this festival. And so you can do that, if you choose to do so. Another caution, there's at least three spots in the medical act that basically says, if you're a medical, if you're licensed under the medical act, you've really got to open up your facility to police and regulatory inspection. You really have less of a, your Fourth Amendment rights against search and seizure are kind of reduced. At least, that's what the statute says, courts may disagree. But there's at least three spots that said, you're subject to reasonable investigation during hours of operation, and so on. That language is conspicuously absent in the, on the recreational side. However, there is some case law that if you are a pervasively regulated industry, there's a U.S. Supreme Court case that says, if you're a pervasively regulated industry, then you really got to, you have a lesser expectation of privacy, and you got to open yourself up to investigation and inspection. They cited the liquor industry, I think tow truck operations, and there's a couple other ones. I think firearms is one of them, and there's yet another one that escapes me. I would submit that marijuana businesses are likely to fall within that, but there is no case law to that degree. But I, if I'm drafting an ordinance, I would make it clear that this is a pervasively regulated industry. I'd say it right in the ordinance. So if there is no question, and so that any person who's getting a license knows that your local law enforcement officers can walk in at a reasonable time and do an inspection, and make sure they're complying with your ordinance and the state regulations. The other thing is, no misdemeanors. If you violate one of your local rules, it's a civil infraction, $500 fine max. As I said, you don't have to license if you don't wish to. You can still permit them, you just say, you get your state license, you locate here, you meet our zoning code, and you're ready to go. If you choose to do so, you may. You can have your own licensing regimen, your licensing scheme, maximum $5,000, but that has to, that is a cap. And you also have to take the steps to say, how much is it costing us to enforce and administer our ordinance? Because you can't collect any more than what it actually costs you, otherwise it's an unlawful tax. You may not prohibit the transportation of marijuana through your community. And again, as I said, you can't do anything with industrial hemp. The bold line at the bottom is one of the key things. You cannot, on the recreational side, now, under the medical side, you can. In fact, the city of Kalamazoo said, we will permit co-location of growers and processors, but we want the retail operation to be separate and apart from that. You can't prohibit that from operating in a single facility. Nor can you, from a, you cannot prohibit somebody from locating and selling marijuana from a, if they share it with a medical license. But that language is very open and vague. You'd think, say, oh yeah, if you are a provisioning center and you're selling medical marijuana, that makes sense that you'd be able to sell recreational marijuana from the same site. But the statute is not worded that narrowly. Ostensibly, you could say, oh yeah, I've got a medical provisioning center license. And because I can get any other type of recreational license at that same spot, now I can co-locate and put my grow and processing operation in the same spot. That's what it seems to suggest, that your local zoning code that might otherwise preclude that is subject to the state statute. Again, the statute is not worded well. It leaves these things that open and kind of in the gray area. I don't think that was the intent, but the plain language, and that's what the courts will apply, the plain language of the statute seems to suggest that if I've got a medical license, I can put any kind of recreational operation where I have that location. Again, I don't think that was intended, but somebody may decide to push the envelope. If you decide to limit the number, remember, I said, one of the things you can do is limit the number of establishments, not type. If you decide to limit the number, then unless you say, everybody who qualifies gets a license, you have to use a competitive process. And the competitive process has to be geared toward determining who is best suited to operate a recreational facility in your community in compliance with the law. Now, I, you know, I'm Joe Businessman, I come forward, I want, here's my application, and I've got, there's, you know, you've got, we're going to permit eight different businesses, and there's 10 of us. How do you know that I'm the one that is best suited through a competitive process that I'll operate in compliance with the law? I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know if you are a really good guy or not. So, I, and you can't use, so unlike the medical, which you could use a lottery. I can say that the city of Kalamazoo used a lottery when we, because we had separation distances. And that's the other thing you may want to think about. We consciously went to use separation distances because we did not want to see these businesses clustered in one area of the community. As the first speakers indicated, where are they going to invest in your community? Where the real estate is cheap? Where is the real estate cheap? In those areas of community that probably, in a neighborhood that's already facing some challenges. Is that where you want to cluster your marijuana businesses? In those parts of your community, or do you want to spread them out? So everybody's got to accept a little bit of the pain with marijuana businesses. So that's what we did. We met, put in separation distances, and when there was a cluster of businesses that located in one area, they were too close to one another, we held a lottery and picked the winner to say, okay, four businesses were too clustered, only one of you are going to be able to get a license. We used something akin to the state lottery ping pong ball system, and vacuum sucked off the ball and said, okay, this is the one that wins. Grand Rapids recently did the same thing. They used a bingo one, and they had their city clerk with a blindfold picking the balls out of the bin. City of Portage did one, either, I think they were going to do it this morning, or they did it yesterday. They also did some type of lottery blind draw in order to figure out who was entitled to some licenses, begin, again, due to clustering and absence of adequate separation distances. So you can do that on the medical side. You can't do it on the recreational side, you've got to use this competitive process. Now, the good thing is this, and again, this, because you don't have any people who are currently licensed to operate in your community. For the first 24 months, although the state can reduce that to 12 months if it chooses, only Michigan residents can get a Class A or the micro business license. You have to be a Michigan resident. Number two, you need a medical license in order to be a Class B, C grower, or a secure transporter, or to be a retailer. Now, that doesn't mean a license in your community. I can be licensed in Kalamazoo and say, okay, you guys are not going to, you're going to permit recreational in your community. I've got my Kalamazoo license, that permits me to operate in Saginaw because I've already got my medical elsewhere. So it doesn't have to be in your community, that's not the way the statute's written. But only medical licenses are permitted to get this next class, and finally, the safety compliance center, anybody can get those. So again, something to be aware of, as to who's coming into your community for the first 12 or up to 24 months of licensure on the recreational side. So what do you do? You, if you've, again, this is a presentation I gave to my city commission on Monday of this week, so this slide may not translate directly to you. But amend, we're going to amend our city ordinances, at least in regard to the medical side, to bring it up to standard. For instance, on the medical side, you may have home delivery. You can't have drive-throughs, so I can't have a drive-through window to get my medicine, but I can ask for home delivery, and the provisioning center can, will send somebody out and deliver your marijuana to your home on the medical side. Don't know what that's going to, don't know if that's going to happen on the recreational side or not. I guess, I'm assuming that Alara will address it. If you don't opt out, amend your code, your zoning code, to make sure that you know where you, where these businesses are going to locate. Whether that's separation distances, whether it's, you know, keeping away from, at least 1,000 feet from pre-existing schools and the like. And if you don't opt out, or again, even if you do or don't, you need to probably address your police powers in terms of, and this, again, is a problem with the act. The statute, and this is, again, it was really cleverly worded. Section 4 says what you can't do. And the act doesn't say, these acts are prohibited, or it is a violation of the act to do thus. It says, this act does not authorize. It doesn't authorize you operating a motor vehicle while under the influence. It doesn't authorize you transferring marijuana to a person under the age of 21. It doesn't authorize you to separate, but using the resin with volatile compounds like propane and butane, to do that in a residential zone. None of these are authorized. Then, Section 5 said, these are all the things you are permitted to do, and you can't be denied any right or privilege if you do this. That is possessing 2.5. You can possess 2.5 ounces as you're walking down the street. You can possess 2.5 ounces of marijuana in your motor vehicle. As a driver, you can't be smoking or consuming, but the other people in your motor vehicle or boat can. Not smoke, but they can consume. So, I'm driving, I can't consume marijuana, I can't be under the influence, but my passenger can be eating brownies, the guys in the backseat can be eating the gummy bears. That's permitted. I can have another 10 ounces in my home under lock and key. So remember, there's some things I'm permitted to do, there's things I'm not authorized to do. Then you go to Section 15 of the statute in terms of, okay, here's the penalties. But then the first thing it says, except for if you're engaging in conduct under Section 4. Remember, Section 4 is all those things that are not authorized? Except for a person engaged in non-authorized conduct in Section 4, here are the violations. So what they did is say, these are not authorized, and then they completely exempted all of those things from the penalty section of the statute. So basically, they've created an unauthorized act that can't be penalized. So you've got a violation that carries no penalty with it. Again, that's the way it was worded, worded by the marijuana industry attorneys. But nonetheless, you may want to say, we're not going to permit use of marijuana, smoking and consuming it in a public place. You might, again, address the issue with minors in possession and the like under your local zoning police powers. What about the money? And I don't know if any of you are familiar with the Showtime series, Weeds. The lead character was a single mother who was selling marijuana to make ends meet, to raise her two sons. And it was kind of a dramedy, a little bit of drama, a little bit of humor. And so, but this is in one of the first episodes. Why do we sell drugs? Well, because there's always cash. There's money to be made. I mean, and I get, maybe I'm getting on the soap I mean, and I get, maybe I'm getting on the soapbox, but under the medical side, marijuana was saying, they were all altruistic. We're just providing a necessary medicine to those people who need it. Okay. What's the altruism on the recreational side? I don't know what it is. But there's a lot of money to be made. In that regard, the new statute replaced what was a 3% tax on medical marijuana, which sunset in March of this year, with a 10% excise tax. And our cut as a municipality is provided you are permitting micro businesses or retailers, you get your pro-rata percent of 15%. So, whatever 15% of the pot of money that's collected on the 10% excise tax, you count all of the retailers and micro businesses across the state, and whatever percentage you have of that is what you get as a community from the 15% that's taken out of the bigger pot. On the other hand, the state gets its cuts first, and for the first two years, at least 20 million is taken off the top, and it goes to funding research to see the impact of marijuana on armed services veterans for thermalities and preventing veteran suicide. So, that's 20 million for the first two years that comes off the top. Then we guess what's left. Under the medical, at least, M. Coles and the Michigan State Police each got 5%. M. Coles is the Michigan Council on Law Enforcement Standards. They got 5%, State Police got 5% on the medical side. That's all gone away. We now are 70% of the money on the recreational side, which has yet to be collected because there's no businesses that have been licensed by the state yet. 35% of it goes to school, and 35% are going to fix the damn roads. Final observation from Judge O'Connell, again, in the same case. "The ballot proposal obfuscated the more confusing and contradictory aspects of the legislation. The statutory language creates a maze for the reader, making it susceptible to multiple interpretations." I hope I've communicated at least my concern. That's what the regulate marijuana-like alcohol statute has done. I think it is a landmine for municipalities. On Monday evening, even though the voters in Kalamazoo, like 65% voted in favor of it, my recommendation to my city commission was, let's wait and see. I'm not saying we have to opt out forever, but let's wait until, to use the pun, let's let the smoke clear. Let's see what we're looking at in terms of maybe some legislative fixes to some of the vague language that's in the statute. It's possible you need a super majority in each house, but the Medical Marijuana Act has been amended several times since its adoption in 2008. Let's see if we can get some changes there, and let's see what the emergency rules that are going to look like that are being promulgated by the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs in probably June. What do those look like before we make a decision as to whether or not we really want to remain, opt-in to recreational marijuana? So, that was my recommendation. I'm not saying it's your recommendation, you've got to listen to the things that are your community and citizens are telling you. And in that regard, what Kalamazoo did, like I said, we opted into the medical side. I put together a work group shortly after the statute, the medical statute was authorized and came into online. Involved my office, it was myself primarily, city clerk, zoning department, law enforcement, and our economic development people. They all had a seat at the table. And we went through the challenges and what the statute permitted or didn't permit, how is it going to impact our community? And we came up with zoning ordinance, we came up with a licensing ordinance that we worked on. We presented, we presented rough draft to the community. We held two public forums in which I moderated or explained to the community. We had, one was an evening one, and one was an afternoon one, between the two, and they were consecutive days in our city hall. We had over 100 people show up between the two meetings. One was a little more well-attended. The first meeting was in the, I don't remember which one was afternoon or evening, but the first meeting was like 75, 80 people, the next one had around 25 to 35. There's a couple of duplicative people came to both ones. But over 100 people, closer to 115 individuals came, and we permitted them to ask questions. We had cards that they could ask questions for, and then we answered them and put them on our webpage in terms of, and quite frankly, it was very helpful. One of the things that came out of that was the decision to permit the co-location of grow and processing operations on one location. Because they said that it makes sense, we can keep things under control, and it makes sense to have processors closer to the growers rather than separating them. So, we did listen, we got some feedback in terms of that. So, listen to your community, find out what they want, but also, don't be afraid to take the difficult stand if you really feel that you're walking into a minefield and you're uncertain of where the law might be. I think that's it. So, with that, questions?
Thank you. Questions? Yes.
I know that you, excuse me, Kalamazoo, you do have the medical facilities, but how much of the revenue is being allocated back into the community for prevention with use? So, have y'all decided? Zero.
So, here's where it goes. We had a, that, number one, there's no tax being collected. I mean, we as a municipality can't collect tax on them. So, it was being collected through the state, that 3% tax. That 3% tax went away in March of this year, just as a lot of these medical facilities were coming online to be in, been collecting that 3% tax, the tax went away. So, there's no money being collected for prevention or drug education. Other questions?
Yes. I had a specific question. It was your slide 13. It's about the first 24 months of recreational establishment applications. Since Saginaw does not have any medical marijuana licensed facilities, the only medical marijuana licenses would be from outside the city of Saginaw. So, the only businesses, local residents would be eligible to do for the first 24 months would be a Class A grower or a micro business. Any larger business or retail, secure transporter, or processor would thereby have to be from an outside entity. And the other exception is, we could have a safety compliance facility.
That's correct. Yes.
How is it really working in your city?
We in Kalamazoo, what we had is a provisional license. So, you were, we granted a provisional license for you to, you could then show to the state that you were eligible to get a state license. And we authorized 18 different licenses. Most of, there's no secure transporter. There's a handful of growers, most of them are provisioning centers. And to date, out of the 18, there's only two that are operating, a safety compliance center, a testing center, and one dispensary or provisioning center. Now, there are other ones that are in the process. We had, did have an industrial park that was not being developed, and there's a, in fact, next week, before the Zoning Board of Appeals, there is a request for variance for them to relocate their building concerning some of our setback requirements. So, they've yet to build yet anything, but as of this date, only two. And if you go to the Bureau of Medical, I'm sorry, Bureau of Marijuana Regulation and get that state map, and you can, you can see all across state, those people who have been licensed, there's only, there's only two in the city of Kalamazoo, and there's one in the city of Portage. And I think there's one in Battle Creek.
Could you just go back to your slide about the funding? Because one, oh, maybe not. Okay. But what I've seen is it was reduced from 25% to 15%? Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because I think that that's an issue that we talk about a lot in the community. I think some of our citizens believe that this is going to be a silver bullet, and this is going to solve all the problems.
The way it worked, under the medical, state collected a 3% excise tax on the retail value of the sale. That went into a big pot. If you had any kind of medical facility in your community, you were eligible to share your prorated portion of that large pot. And for municipalities, cities, villages, townships, 25% of what was collected was subject to being divvied up by municipalities. So, for instance, if you had, if there, and I'm just picking around the numbers here, whatever that 25% pot meant, if in your community you had a provisioning center, a grower, and a processor, you had three separate, and then, and there were 3,000 other facilities across the state, you would get 1 one-thousandth of that 25% pot. And I, in one of my earlier presentations, I went through the arithmetic, and basically, even under the most generous assumptions in terms of collecting, like a billion dollars, it turned out that, and you were getting 1% of that pot, I think it was 1, it worked out, you, maybe you were paying, you were going to get like $75,000. That was on the medical side. Recreational side, it's changed now. Number one, you can, you're only eligible to receive that 50, number, it's a 10%, so it's a bigger tax that's being collected. But the amount that the municipalities get of that 10% has been reduced, as you said, from 25 to 15. And you need, the only way you're going to be eligible is if you have a provisioning center or a micro business. So, the fact that you are permitting growers and processors doesn't give you a cut of that pot at all. You need to permit the retailer and micro businesses in order to be eligible to get that. And I have no idea what the revenue stream is likely to be in Michigan for that. I mean, there's been some, and I don't have it in front of me, I read a study yesterday in terms of what they think is the impact of marijuana business, but this is nationwide. Basically, the only thing that outstrips the anticipated level of marijuana business in the United States is cigarettes. They think it's to be the number two, eclipsing video games in terms of cash flow. So, at least the experts think there's a lot of money to be made. But how much of that is going to be collected on that 10% tax and put in the pockets of municipalities? I think at this point, it's a little, nobody can be sure. Anybody else?
This is probably, I think, if I'm correct, one of the most progressive medical marijuana laws, recreational laws in the country. But I have a question when it comes to law enforcement, people with records, because you mentioned that there would be some individuals who'd be precluded from getting a license. Have you heard any conversation, like at the state level, on forgiving people with records when it comes to marijuana?
No. The individual, obviously, possession or delivery of marijuana is a crime. Under Michigan law, you are permitted to get an expungement on your record, provided you only have one felony and no more than two misdemeanors. If you have two felonies, you don't qualify. If you have three misdemeanors, you don't qualify. But you can get an expungement, but you have to be at least five years from your last incarcer, either conviction or incarceration, whatever is longer. And we do, I mean, my office does grant expungement. Usually, the person is, you know, they've, they did something foolish when they were in their 20s, now they're in their 30s, they're trying to get a job, or, you know, they've become a more responsible individual, and they're looking to get their criminal record expunged. And we do that all the time, but there is, to answer your question, I'm not aware of anything at state law that is in the works to change the expungement statute.
Has something? Is there any, what's happening with the employers? If the marijuana becomes illegal, what are we going to do with the plants and stuff like that, person come in?
That is a whole different discussion, but I know that, and I've attended several seminars on this, in terms of, are you going to have a zero tolerance policy? One of the things that is difficult with marijuana, and I think you, the previous speaker mentioned it, and I had this in a, again, earlier slide, and permit me to, if you haven't seen it, get this. This is available from, on the state's website. This is a, this was a report that was authorized by legislation. It was just issued within the last month and a half, in March. And it was a group of, I think, seven people representing the state police, a registered patient, a forensic toxicologist, a professor from a public research area, and the person who sat on it was an expertise in traffic safety, another professor whose expertise was pharmacology, particularly in cannabis pharmacology, and a physician. And the question they were asked to research is, should Michigan have a per se limit for impaired driving? Now, some states do have it, but their recommendation was, no, because of the various ways people consume marijuana, the different effects it has, are you, are you kind of, is this your first or second time using it as opposed to a regular user? And the fact that they could not find, based upon the research, any correlation between the amount of marijuana found in your system, which can stay in your system for days, and whether or not you were under or impaired to operate a motor vehicle or heavy machinery. There is no, they couldn't find any proof that there's a direct correlation, unlike the well-established tests for blood alcohol, where you can, there is a correlation depending on where you test for your blood alcohol and how, and your ability to operate a motor vehicle. They could not find one, so their recommendation with the legislature, do not do, use a per se level. Now, that gets to your question. As an employer, who, where you suspect an employee who may be under the influence, there, the statute codifies a federal case that came out of Michigan, there was, and again, I apologize for taking a little time, but I want you to explain, I want you to know the context. There was a gentleman who worked at the Walmart in Battle Creek. He was, he had his medical card. He said he never, did not smoke it at work, did not come to work under the influence, but he used it at home because he had, I think it was cancer or back, and I forget one of the two. But while at work, he had an accident. He was required to go to the hospital, and as part of their protocol, they ran a drug screen on him and disclosed marijuana in his system. Now, he says, I have a card, I was not under the influence at the time, and therefore, I should not be discharged, because Walmart fired him. That was a case in federal court, and the district court and the Michigan, and the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals said, sorry, you don't have any rights. Just because you have a medical card doesn't trump the fact that your employer does not have to permit you to be on the workplace with any amount of marijuana in your system, and your discharge will stand. That statute, or that ruling, has been one of the things that was included in the new law. No employer is required to permit the use of marijuana on their premises, or to permit any person to be working for them with any amount of marijuana in their system, whether or not they are under the influence. Now, that does raise some interesting questions in terms of, obviously, you don't want your law enforcement officers, you don't want your people who are working with heavy machinery or operating equipment or vehicles to be under, to have any amount of alcohol, I'm sorry, any amount of marijuana in their system. But what about the person who's just working in a secretarial function? Is that okay? Should you pre-screen? One of the things that individuals have indicated is the job market is getting tighter, and if you're testing for people who have marijuana in their system, you may be knocking some people out, and you find that the pool of people eligible to be hired is growing smaller, and it's a difficult job market and employment market right now. It's been suggested by some that you don't do a pre-test, but if you see some behavior in the work site that leads you to believe that the person may be under the influence, have somebody else with you document that, and then take some steps. And the other question is, do you fire them immediately? Do you put them in some type of program? So, there's all kinds of options. That is a question, that's a whole issue. You really need to have a discussion with your labor council and your city attorney in terms of, what should your employment policies look like? The other thing that's also, it's tricky about this, is because we're municipalities, oftentimes, we get federal money and grants. Federal money says, you have to have a drug-free policy, and so... Federal money says you have to have a drug-free policy, and so, that really makes it a little bit difficult, but there may be some pushback from your employees who are in unions, who say, "Hey, we need some protection, we're, we wanna permit, we wanna be permitted to use this, what is now a legal substance in Michigan, and we shouldn't put our job at risk." So, it is, again, that is an interesting field that, again, goes beyond the scope of really what I was prepared to address this morning, but those are some of the issues out there.
I'll be extremely concerned about people getting fired from their jobs to have marijuana in their system they think is legal in the city and stuff like that, and then that's gonna come back on our tax base and ruin the whole household, so I'm really concerned about that.
What you have to do is, whatever your policy is, make sure it is communicated to your employees.
Two really quick questions. I just wanna make sure I'm clear. We cannot prohibit growing, processing, and retailing from one facility for recreational, correct?
It appears that the act appears to say that you cannot prohibit that. Yes, that's correct.
Seth, and you said that you came to that conclusion anyway, and I thought that that was, that was an unavoidable thing. And then, my other question is, in terms of limiting the number of licenses, short of requiring certain distances between facilities, that competitive process wording is concerning. Did you have a limit for numbers in your, in your area, or have you heard of any other ways that they were able to avoid the competitive process requirement and yet limit in some way?
The competitive process requirement is only on the recreational side. I do know that some communities, Lansing in particular, did have some type of scoring matrix in which they used. My understanding is that that was challenged in court, but I don't know how that resulted, what the result of that was. I did, we did get pushback, because we were gonna use, as we said, we used a lottery, and what we did was just separation distance. We said, here's, we zoned the community, said we were permitting these type of operations in these kind of zones, and you have to be separated from one another, and then we let the free market determine how many eligible locations and people coming to get those locations. We let the free market dictate, if you will. So, that's how we got to 18.
18, that only resulted in two, the market did what?
Two so far. There's other people who are in the, in the pipeline.
But even then, that's, I mean, that's a huge decrease.
Those are the individuals or businesses that were prepared to get up and running. They had their act together. As soon as they got our provisional license, they were right there, they'd already pre-qualified with the state, they, and they had a good, clean record, and they were able to get approved by the licensing board in pretty fast fashion. But others, you know, they had an option to purchase a property, so now they're trying to close on the property, or they, they had a lease, or some, some of them actually need to build the infrastructure. They've got a vacant property, now they gotta put some, a building on the property, and that takes time. So, those are some of the challenges that had, but there was some pushback. The, the industry really wanted some type of competitive process, because they said, "Well, you don't know who you're getting, you, and ostensibly, they think they can make the best showing, and we'll give them the license," which is okay until you say, "Well, we're gonna permit 12." And number 13, who didn't get the license because of whatever scoring system or competitive system you used, decides to challenge you because they say, "The process is flawed, or you didn't score it correctly, and I was denied due process, and I'm going to sue you because I really should've gotten three more points, and I would've got the last license instead of the guy across the hall." Do you, do you need, I mean, you don't have to do this. Why are you gonna, why would you invite lawsuits? So, we decided not to, we let the free market dictate how many businesses would locate in Kalamazoo, and we avoided all of that, only using a lottery, blind draw, and there's no decision-making in that determination, and while the industry didn't like it, they really didn't have a leg to stand on. Hence, you now see the competitive process language in the new statute.
Clyde, I wanna start with a question that's specific to this law. Does Kalamazoo collect an income tax?
No.
Okay. This would not be a problem you have a direct relationship with then. Saginaw does collect an income tax on incomes of all type, and I wondered what questions have come up about compliance with local income tax laws, where Saginaw, for example, keys off your federal tax form. Has there been discussion about how complete or how truthful people's reporting is of income in an all-cash industry at the present time, where there's not banking available?
I, I, I know there's been some movement, both at the federal, and clearly, there has been some in the state law, to permit banks to offer services to marijuana businesses. You raise a good question, and the individuals who are, I think, I don't know, and it's really a question of how the feds are gonna treat that. I mean, even under federal law, illegal, illegally gotten income is still subject to tax, and I don't know that there's necessarily a fourth, or, I'm sorry, a Fifth Amendment issue that's raised if you declare it, because actually, you're under the pendulum of perjury, you're saying that this is truthful. I mean, when you, everybody signed their tax a month ago, and that's, remember that little line just above your signature? Nobody reads it, but you do say, "Under the pendulum of perjury, this tax income, this report is accurate." And I, so you raise a good question. I don't know, Battle Creek did have an income tax. Since I no longer work for that community, I don't know how they've addressed it. I would think that, and I know there's a consortium of communities that do levy income tax, and the income tax administrators talk with one another, they also talk to the state, the Department of Treasury, so I assume they're gonna work through some of that, but you raise a good question. How, how truthful is that return that you're, because they all key, the first thing you gotta do when you file your income, or local income tax, is you gotta put the first page of your federal income tax with it. So, yeah, having paid City of Battle Creek income tax for a lot of years, I know how it works.
On the income tax question, so, we have a lot of businesses that would be cash, primarily cash. I mean, it's probably been going down quite a bit since more use of prevalence of credit cards, and for a long time, small businesses didn't take credit cards, that's becoming more prevalent now, but I think we would just rely on their filings, just like any other business. For instance, if you have a, a bar is probably a pretty heavy cash business, so we rely on their filings. I don't think, I don't know that we would have any additional enforcement beyond what we would have with any other business. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see that as an issue. I'll tell you, just from looking at it with small businesses, probably across the country, if you look at a lot of small businesses, they don't show a lot of income, because you're gonna write off a lot. So, especially home-based businesses, small businesses, I wouldn't see us doing anything different than we do with other small businesses.
The reason I ask is, for federal purposes, the type of deduction you just mentioned are not allowed on illegal substance sales. So, the incentives are slightly different than just reducing a little bit of income because you're running a cash business. You get almost no deductions at the federal level.
I think what Clyde said is, we would know more about it when you get farther into the business. There is, it's called MIDA, I think there's around 20 cities in Michigan that have local income tax, and they all work together. Grand Rapids is one, Lansing is one, so there are cities that are working with the industry that do have local income tax. Then, they all also work with Michigan Department of Treasury. Michigan Department of Treasury, I believe, is the collection agent for the City of Detroit. They did that as part of their bankruptcy process, so I'm sure that they're looking at that as well, because I believe Detroit is another city that has, has those facilities. So, it's definitely something that's being reviewed, I'm sure.
First, kind of a statement, and it kinda goes along with what we're talking about right now. I'm gonna assume that eventually, the state of Michigan is going to come out with another act like P eight two eighty-one of 2016, which took it from seed, kind of to commercialize the business. I can only assume that we're gonna have to go in that direction because of the way that this recreational was put through. So, to kinda help out with this question here, I think, is that under that 2016 act, if you read it, it's very, very regulated as to transportation, what's on hand, what's sold, what's in the truck, what's been, what cropped has to be destroyed, how much was destroyed. So, that actually right there would help to track a lot of the marijuana, and I think would help out with some of the income that's actually being generated, based on what the businesses are charging for that.
I would echo that observation. I think one of the, I think I said, I said it on one of the slides, it's going to be up to the Bureau of Marijuana Regulation to fill the gaps in this statute, in terms of what are, what you can do, and in terms of requiring various businesses to, and track what's going on. I think that's really gonna come from the administrative side, but some of the concerns I do raise are legislative in nature, and it's gonna require some, some fixes, I think, from the state legislature to do that.
I got one.
Go ahead.
So, thank you so much, but I need to know this, just straight out. Is Kalamazoo, in the time that they've done this, is this a money-making venture? Is the city going to see some revenue that's going to put, that's gonna help the municipality?
I think it's negligible. The only thing that we've been able to collect is, and remember, if, if we license, we can collect that $5,000, but again, it's only to cover our actual costs, and I can say that I think, the clerk would know better than I, we, we did not collect $5,000. We had, when licensees came in, I think they were required, I want to say, put $500 down, and if you didn't get a license, then we refunded a lot of that back, because all the, the clerk did was shuffle paper. There wasn't a lot of administrative time, and at this point, we've only got two businesses up or operating, to the degree that our law enforcement agencies have had to deal with that. Again, negligible. The only money that we're likely to receive is, again, out of that 15% pot, that, I shouldn't use, that 50% pool that's being collected on the excise tax. So, no, I, from my perspective, I don't see this as a money-making proposition, and if you're gonna, if you, now, where this can come in is if there's buildings that are going to be reused, that are currently, don't have any taxable value to speak of, and now the people are gonna put businesses, businesses into vacant buildings, or you've got an industrial park that nobody's developed, and there's businesses that are gonna build in that, now you're gonna see some income through your, I assume you got both, your property tax in addition to the income tax. So, you're gonna see a little bit of income flow there, but again, whatever your municipal tax rate is, I think somebody said it was less than 10%, so it's seven mils on whatever the taxable value is of that. So, you're gonna see that income, and where you probably didn't see it before, because either it was vacant land or a building that was vacant. So, you get, you get a little bit of that flow, but other than that, I don't see this as a windfall.
Actually, this is another, I actually have a question for Clyde. It's just kind of going along with what Brenda's talking about. Brenda, Councilman Moore, I did actually reach out to Bay City and talk to a couple of their commissioners, and they are charging the $5,000 fee per facility, and they said it's kind of a break-even point right now for them, and, but they didn't have any really strong numbers.
I, I do want, you mentioned that state, your website has the one report, but you didn't name the report. Could you do that, first of all?
This is the report from the Impaired Driving Safety Commission. Impaired Driving Safety Commission. It was authorized by Act 350 of 2016, and if you're willing, it's at www.michigan.gov/documents/msp/michigan_ impaired-driver-report. So, I think that-
I just wanted to make sure that we, everyone could understand which report you're referring to. The second, my second question goes to, since the report is suggesting the legislature should not enact any kind of specific limit for what would be impaired under the Marijuana Recreational Act, well, how do you foresee our police can enforce when it comes to driving an issue of, is the person impaired or not?
What the commission recommended was additional training to officers so they can recognize impairment in determining somebody who might be under the influence of marijuana. So, then, there is some literature out there, but that's what the recommendation was, was greater officer training, so as to identify aspects of what, I mean, again, the droopy eyes, maybe the slow reaction. Interestingly enough, this report determined that people who are under the influence of marijuana are safer drivers than people under the influence of alcohol, because people under the, under the influence of alcohol seem to take riskier, make riskier decisions, they drive a little faster, whereas the people under marijuana tend to drive a little slower. I mean, again, that's, this is what the report said, so it's kind of interesting. It's, it's an interesting read.
It goes back, then, from the police standpoint, to observations, as opposed to a, to an objective test. It'll be subjective observations like the drug alcohol, drug, excuse me, the impaired driving used to be before they had the blood alcohol limits, correct?
Right. And I think the other thing that make, occur, and again, I'm, like I said, I've represented municipalities my entire professional career, so I've done, I did my share of impaired driving and under the influence prosecutions. I think that this, the defense bar is probably gonna have a heyday in trying to, in defending people who get stopped for driving under the influence, because of, again, more of a subjective as opposed to an objective criteria. But closer that law enforcement can get to that objective criteria in terms of whether somebody's under the influence of marijuana, and did it impact their driving, the better case you're gonna make. But it's, it's gonna be an interesting challenge in the courts in the next few years.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Yes?
Just a couple more things, and then I'll wrap up. So, we got into kind of the human resource issue of this with companies and that, and no matter what a municipality does, it's, it's gonna be out there, because it is legal at the state level. So, I think it's safe to say and ask the question that no matter what, companies are gonna have to deal with this within their own human resources, because it is legal in the state. Yeah, that's correct.
I agree. I mean, municipalities are not unique in that regard.
The other thing, too, we kinda mentioned, actually, the, the amount of marijuana that can, that you can have in possession, and I believe, reading in the act currently, that if they have over 10 ounces of marijuana on them, it can still be treated as a criminal offense, as if it is prior to, and that they were convicted for, because there was an article in the Detroit Free Press from November of 2018 that spoke about, there was 120, within the last five years, 120,000 Michigan, Michigan people were arrested for marijuana instances. Of those 120, 50,000 of the Michanders were actually prosecuted for small levels of marijuana that was in the possession, which would be legal now in the state. So, that's 50,000 cases that are not going through the court system, but I also wanna make note, too, that about 3,700 of those that were convicted, there was a study back in 2016, they would still be in that legislative area, because they did have large amounts of marijuana that were in their possession. So, just wanna make that known. Thanks.
Nothing further than I think we can call the session to a recess at this point? I would like to remind everyone of the rules for public input. Again, I wanna welcome those who signed up to address counsel. Thank you for sharing with us your thoughts, and as we told you before, hearing from you is very important, so we appreciate the opportunity to listen, but we ask that you speak slowly and clearly, so we don't miss what you have to say when you are called to the podium. You have three minutes. It's timed by our clerk. So, you need to state your name and address first. You have to let us know if you're speaking for yourself alone or for a group, and if it's for the group, please tell us who. There is the three-minute limit, just to remind everybody. You wanna make sure you cover your main points first, and please make sure your presentation is courteous and respectful to the members of the public, as, as well as the audience and city council. With that, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Bill Kosinski.
Thank you very much. As was said, my name is Bill Kosinski. It's a pleasure to see you all here today, and exciting times that we're living in. Big changes are occurring here, and I'm really excited to be a part of it. Sorry, my address is 3404 Pasadena Place, Saginaw, Michigan, 48603. I am speaking on my own behalf as a patient advocate- Saginaw, Michigan, 48603. I am speaking on my own behalf, as a patient advocate, as well as some people who just couldn't be here today, who asked me to say a few words. What I'd like to talk about is a few numbers. Okay? I've been hearing a lot today about the possible detriment of this program, some negative things that possibly could happen. But there's a lot of positive things as well. First of all, I'd like to talk about our medical marijuana program. As of 2017, there were over 7,500 registered patients in the county of Saginaw. 5,700. That was 2017. I'm sure it's well over 6,000 by now. As a patient in the program myself, with four herniated discs, degenerative disc disease, and adult onset of seizure disorder, I can tell you that this has been a life-saving, life-changing product. Now, I know we all agree that medical marijuana is a great thing, and we'd love to see it in our state. We'd love to see people getting away from opioids that have been so detrimental to our society, and moving towards something that actually does work. Now, we're here talking about recreational. What are the benefits? What is the, as was said earlier, altruistic part of this program? Well, maybe it's not so much altruistic, but how altruistic is a glass of wine at the end of the day? How altruistic is going to my favorite pub, and having a beer, to help calm my nerves as, after a stressful day at work? I think the 9,710 people who voted for this bill would agree with me, when they say, I think that I don't want to have to go to jail, just because I choose not to drink alcohol as my drug of choice. I also think that we need to consider the fact that 42,000 people within our county have agreed that this is something that we want. And I think that as elected officials, we need to consider that you are working for the will of the people, not just for a dollar, or for our own internal biases, but to represent what the people are looking for from you. They know what the bad side of marijuana is, they know what the good side is, and they have chosen to vote for this. All I ask is that you do the same. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker today is Tina Sokowski. Thank you. Let's go to Nicholas Bajovas.
Hi, I'm Nick Bajovas, 2116 Marquette, 48602. Thank you for having me. I find it ironic that we just gathered around the table of stimulants, and here we are talking about marijuana. So, I have quite a long-winded speech. I've provided you all a copy of that. The legend of General Motors was that of a savior which abandoned us. It's no secret that for decades, Saginaw relied heavily on the auto industry to supply our people with careers and a livable wage. Our elders, elders speak of GM as the lifeblood of their golden days, while my generation inherited a void, and left largely to wonder what it would be like to have such a powerhouse fuel our local economy. Propositions like this rarely come along, and with such promise. But here we are, deciding if we are to let the professional cannabis industry into our domain. And this is not just one single shot, but rather five business pillars collectively driving an entire industry: growing, processing, laboratory testing, transportation and retail, and all of the jobs that reside within. Cannabis can become another key component of our local economic portfolio. In 2008, the citizens of the city of Saginaw voted 68% in favor of creating a medical marijuana system that would allow people to get their medicine, which was not allowed to take root within the city. Six years later, in 2014, that same electorate decriminalized marijuana with a yes vote of 60% to amend our city charter, and notably during a midterm election cycle. In this past November, 69% of your constituents voted to end marijuana prohibition altogether. Again, a major voice, especially on and off-cycle election. To date, the powers that be have defied the will of the people, directly causing this rust-belt city to forfeit a 10-year economic opportunity. We do not want to witness our great city disappoint us again with another biased decision, nor should we squander any more of our potential without a vision for the bigger picture. It takes courage to move forward into territory unexplored. The annual $5,000 fee per licensed facility, plus a portion of the state retail excise tax, will help defray administrative and law enforcement costs. The city will generate revenue, as new businesses and permanent taxable jobs are created that garner 1.5% tax on income. And better yet, the incomes in the professional cannabis industry typically provide at least a livable wage of $15 per hour, if you look at the stats elsewhere, even for the most menial jobs. The industry is in desperate need of growers, trimmers, budtenders, processors, chefs, bakers, scientists, lab technicians, excuse me, security guards, and secure transporters. These jobs will bolster our local money velocity, not only from the ability to provide personable, personal disposable incomes, but also by getting more foot traffic into our commercially zoned districts. Mayor requests a motion from the council for another three minutes. Actually, the city charter says second request.
Actually, Mayor, I'd like to listen to the rest of Nick's presentation. So, under section six of our charter, our council rules, I'd like to make a motion to an extent, and listen to the rest of-
You cannot do a motion, excuse me, not during committee, the whole.
That was the limit set at the formal council meeting.
Come on, Mayor, stop it, stay. Our next-
We do have the statement that you provided. Cannot do, this is a committee of the whole, and there's only certain things we are allowed to do at a committee of the whole by law. Okay?
With that, Mayor, our next speaker is Gerald Naples. And I believe that he is not here today. Our next speaker is Alicia Mahadeo. Is Alicia here? Okay, we will go
So far, heard today, has not been impressive to me at all. I just don't think there's enough knowledge, or anything on the regulation of air control, odors. If you do have a complaint, there's not enough people to cover complaints, if you have complaints in the city. I read some of the Colorado stuff online, and I didn't see any positive things, increase in crime, increase in your black market in marijuana, young adolescent's getting a hold of this, with, you know, dropping out of school with poor grade scores, failing classes, more traffic deaths. I just don't see, if our city isn't going to make any money off of this, even the reason for it. And if everybody can grow their own plant, why do we have to have big marijuana facilities and overabundance of this stuff in our city? We've all worked very hard to get our city cleaned up, and going in the right direction, and I just see it falling into the wrong direction. Gang members and everything else. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Camp Hill.
Hello, Council. My name is Jim Camp. I'm a lifelong resident here in Saginaw, the city, that is. I live at 132 South Alexander Street. Like I said, I was born and raised right here in Saginaw. I am a local business owner, who will be celebrating 10 years at the September. Again, a local business owner, right here in Saginaw, who is 100% in support of marijuana businesses here in the city. I personally have nothing more to say, but I would love to finish off where this gentleman here had an opportunity, who wrote this lovely speech, want the others to hear this. So, in the future, when we opt out, the industry will most likely certainly continue to exist around us, and within us, even if we will willingly ignore it. Human nature has proven that people always will find the means to acquire the things that they want or need. And by opting out, we are choosing to ignore the market that already exists here, and thereby acquisition a permanent, excuse me, I'm sorry, a permanent black market. Don't get me wrong, there certainly are risks involved here. In a black market, the product is not very, not verified for potency, not tested for pesticides or molds, and not tested for heavy materials, metals, excuse me. A legal market means a safe market. It means a statewide tracking system for every single plant and product, from seed to sale. It means ensuring consistency and the quality marketplace. Fortunately, we have our neighbors to the north already conducting the successful experiment for us. Bay County is largely embracing the cannabis industry, and municipalities should be looking to, be looking to as a model for us. 100 years of cannabis prohibition is now ending. We do not adopt medical and recreational ordinances, 16, if we do not, except, if we do not adopt medical and recreational ordinances, 69% of our population is going elsewhere. With this, them will go their dollars. Bay City, Bangor, Coquelin, Hampton Township, Buena Vista, Spalding Township, Vassar, Flint, Clough, Chestnut, Pinconning, all are certainly enjoy our businesses, our business, excuse me. The same goes for 50.2% of Saginaw Township voters, who were denied local dispensaries by the planning commission. Those people and their committee couldn't find a home in our city, which is very true. It is also our duty, our duty to establish an archilurgical, architectural for people. Like any good experiment, we see what works and what doesn't. We grow with it, adapt and tweak our policies according to meet our changes' needs, rejecting the opportunity without even trying to do the-
Thank you, because your time is up. Again, again, I can remind, I, let me remind you, you can sign up as well for a regular council meeting, okay?
Mayor, our final speaker today is Jake McKay.
Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Jake McKay. My address is 5 Restland 48602. I'm about 800 feet from the city, city line. And my interest is just explorative. I'm currently, at this moment, not a business owner or affiliated with a current business. So, in this time, I'll try to be as concise as possible. I will attempt to highlight the reasons to care, chance to build ideas with keen and meaningful relevancy that benefits all. First, I will begin by roadmapping the purpose, the twofold essence why medical marijuana dispensary businesses are needed in our community, and the vast utility medicinally, and its economic viability as a taxable, as a new taxable revenue. The objective: providing the information to patients, to allow them to make an educated decision on the medicinal applications, and the pertinent data and tracking for business owners, investors, and maintaining accordance with the state and local governments and agencies. And third, the scope: the geographical and competitive landscape, the allocation of the new surplus of fund, of finances, the circular, circular flow for the local economy, and the potential for new markets. Purpose: to identify the real impact, why, and why having a patient-controlled medicine helps. The health benefits are numerous, from, from chronic illness, such as rheumatoid arthritis, lupus, cancer, diabetes, cirrhosis. This allows the patient to, with the right, with the right education, dose themselves. And then there are more severe illnesses, in the cases of epilepsy, where a child could see 200 to 400 epileptic seizures in a day, lasting for 1 to 25 minutes. There, there is data that, there's data and real cases that show that this, this greatly reduces the, it, it's one of the apparent factors in reducing the symptoms. It also replaces six inefficient pharmaceutical drugs. There's also conclusive empirical data that shows the decrease of tumor size in cancer patients with using Rick Simpson oil. And then the economic impact. Obviously, the surplus in tax revenue, although the sentiment, I believe, was that it wouldn't be the windfall of, of, you know, financial prosperity. Regardless, that's for future interpretation. Increased circular flow via tourist-related businesses, and then-
Sir, Mr. McKay, we appreciate it. Thank you to all our speakers. We appreciate the input. That's part of what we are looking for. I think the manager's suggestion of a survey will be pursued, and I would encourage everyone to respond. The council does look for public input, and we think it's very important. So, with that, council members, Mr. Robinson, and we also have the city webpage, there will be a number of the items brought up today on the webpage. Now, we do have, council, Mr. Robinson has stayed. If there's any questions that were raised, that he, that you have for him, at this time, as a result of the presentations, he is available. Any questions of Mr. Robinson, council members? Okay, hearing none, then we will adjourn today's meeting. Thank you.